Okay, if we can have everyone take their seats so we can get the meeting started, please. Okay, if we can start off with roll call.
Yes, can we have District 202 roll call, please?
Here.
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 Can you hear me?
Okay.
I hear you.
District 65, Cohen.
Here.
Mendoza.
Here.
Chow.
Here.
Tanya Moody.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Halpern.
Here.
Arthur.
Here.
So I want to welcome everyone to our joint meeting and welcome our colleagues from District 202. It's always a pleasure to be working together as joint boards and reflecting the great partnerships that we have. I do want to pause for a moment and take a moment to reflect and think in your own way on the situations that we have in our country. And I want to have us remember Charleston in a church in a parking lot next to a Kroger's. The children who attended Marjory Stoneman High School and the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. If we take these incidences along with many others, we're humbled, as we are all, in public service to serve community and to serve our families and to serve our children. We're humbled by this, but we have to indeed fight on and move forward to do everything in our powers to make a difference in the lives of the families and the members of our community and communities around the country. So if we can take a moment of silence and reflect on all of these atrocious tragedies in our society and think about what we will do next to make a difference, I'd appreciate Thank you.
Dr. Witherspoon?
Well, thank you very much for that, Dr. Goran. It's just always such a privilege to be over here and to be hosted by all of you and to once again be reminded of the important and effective partnership that our two districts have established and how important it is to all of our students and families in Evanston, Skulkey.
So I just want to say thank you for having us and hosting us. It's always a pleasure to be here. I look forward to some productive conversations this evening and really looking forward to the reports that we're going to hear. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on. Comments from the public. We actually do not have any speakers signed on, so we will move into our first discussion item, which I'll invite our colleagues from Northwestern. They can join us at the table up here to give us an update on the NIRA report.
Could I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Very brief comment.
Absolutely, yes. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I wanted to say something about this moment of silence that we're having. I wanted us very much to have this, not so much for the victims of these atrocities, but for all of us. There was once a time when we could look to our national leadership to provide us with solace and hope and even amazing grace, but we can't get that anymore. And so instead of looking upward for national leadership, we have to look at all of us, at our community, and provide ourselves with the strength and the solidarity to move forward.
Thank you.
So as we welcome our colleagues, the one thing that I think is really important to stress is the deep partnership here between both school districts and our colleagues at Northwestern. And you'll see in the slides arrows that go both ways, and we mean it, actually, that the challenges, the opportunities, the questions that we have in District 65 and, if I may, for District 202, these are incredibly important challenges. And to have a university right next door who's not only willing to work with us, but being able to help us articulate questions and then dive deep into understanding evidence and understanding solutions is really important. So I just want to highlight the importance of the Northwestern-Evanston connection and the word alliance, which is really what we are. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. David Figlio, who is the Dean of the School of Education and Social Policy at Northwestern. And David, you can introduce your colleagues and also take a kickoff into the narrow work that we're doing.
Super. Thank you so much. It's nice to see everybody again. And so the people up here with me are Lila Goldstein, who you'll hear from more tonight and you've heard from her before as well. Lila is really the point person on a lot of the day-to-day aspects of research partnerships between District 65, District 202, and Northwestern. We have Amy Pratt, who is the Assistant Dean for Community Education Partnerships at the School of Education and Social Policy, and Nicole Pinkard, who is the faculty director of our Office of Community Education Partnerships at the School of Education and Social Policy. You know, Paul mentioned, of course, this notion about arrows going both ways. And one thing that I don't know how many people around the table or in TV land know is how seriously we actually take that. Folks on both boards are used to seeing me up here from time to time, providing information and evidence in areas where I have expertise. I have a board of people from all over the world who are my most trusted advisors of the School of Education and Social Policy. And it was a privilege last year, actually, my first additions to the board were to ask Eric Witherspoon and Paul Goran to come and serve as my advisors. And I know that each of them have provided me with a tremendous amount of ideas and insight about the way in which I'm running my school. So when we talk about the arrows going both ways, it's happening in so many different dimensions, both in terms of how our three institutions are all working together to try to build a better Evanston by ensuring, working towards our shared goal of equity and excellence for all. But then also, I'm delighted that Eric and Paul are so committed to helping me build a better Northwestern as well, in my corner of Northwestern. So we're grateful. By the way, I also want to, I appreciate everybody. Usually, I'm happy to spend the full evening with you, but I know that the members of both boards know that tonight, instead of going home and being a husband, I'm going back to Northwestern to be a dean. And so I'll stay for as long as I possibly can tonight to help answer questions. So just as, we thought it would be useful to just foreground the broad NIRA partnership before Lila takes over. So NIRA, I think it's easy for us sometimes to think about NIRA as being a single project, but actually, NIRA really is all about, really is all about this deep, abiding, mutualistic partnership between the two school districts in Northwestern that's working for equity and excellence in education across Northwestern, I mean, across Evanston, rather. I'm sorry, I'm tired. And one thing that's really crucial about where we're trying to make sure we go is to make sure that a partnership with Northwestern is core to helping the school districts to do their work as well as possible and that the partnership is also core to helping Northwestern with our research and teaching missions as much as possible. And so when you think about, then, what that means on the ground, well, you know, there was this allusion to arrows going both ways, and it really is important. So what is Northwestern all about? Northwestern is about producing the best possible research that can be produced. What are District 65 and ETHS all about? About providing the best possible education for the children of Evanston. And so the goal here is to have a true mutualistic relationship between all of the institutions, where you have better research to improve practice, better practice that is research-based. And you can see that problems of practice then help to prompt and improve research, better research helps to feed back to practice. And that's our real goal. And of course, we also have, we as a team of the two school districts, the university are really also about using NIRA to help to do things like improve capacity and inform the community as well. So we do this in a number of, we do this in a number of different ways. We're building collaboration and partnerships. We're engaging in ongoing communication that allows all the partnerships to engage in research and practice work that's informed by school district research agendas, which were developed collaboratively among the partners. These are research agendas that bring focus and vision for NIRA's joint work. An important thing about, then, what this is supposed to, what this is doing and has been doing is the goal is, I know sometimes people talk about the glacial speed at which research often occurs, but actually, I'm not looking at you, Jonathan, but I might have been. But, you know, one of the things that's important about this type of process and the process we're trying to, we're trying to go on by having this notion of continuous relationship between research and practice, problems of practice feeding research and the like, is to dramatically reduce the speed, reduce the time, rather, increase the speed at which we can have actionable research that can be brought to bear and the like. And of course, you know, one thing that is not lost on me and I know is not lost on anybody in either school board or anybody in the administrations of the two school districts, right, is how centrally important that is, because any delay means you have more kids who don't have the chance to have the education that we hope that they will have. And so the aspiration, then, by trying to purposefully leverage all the strengths of District 65, all the strengths of District 202, all the strengths of Northwestern towards this common purpose is because I think everybody in this community is impatient, and we should be impatient. We want to do this, we want to have improved practice as research-based, and we want to have better research for practice. So NIRA is working to advance many projects across this partnership. The one example, and it's the example we'll hear more from tonight, is the On Track Indicator for post-secondary persistence. The reason that District 65, District 202, and Northwestern are so interested in working on that together, as we know, is that it will help to be, help to provide a tool that will help us understand Evanston students providing information on action, on what should be addressed to help to improve children's life chances and potential for post-secondary persistence. But NIRA is more than just this one study, and in fact, I think one reason we wanted to foreground with these slides now is to tell you while we're waiting to have, we've made a lot of progress on that tool that Lila will be talking about, but in addition, there are things that are happening right away. So there's already been a lot of capacity building, which is one of our shorter-run outcomes. Thanks to NIRA, this partnership, we've been able to add research staff in the two districts and providing technical assistance to help the districts to do their own research. So one example of this is District 202's Curriculum Review Project. Because of the added staff capacity, the NIRA data analysts, ETHS is able to involve students in their work through focus groups. This is ensuring that the student voice and experience is driving the process to improve learning and well-being and that this work reflects the district's commitment to equity. And I know that Pete can provide more information on this in the Q and A if necessary. NIRA is also helping to build and support numerous research-practice projects that are positively impacting the school districts and positively impacting the community of Evanston in immediate ways. And one of the things that I, again, so I come from a business background, even though I'm the dean of a School of Education and Social Policy. And so one thing, and I know a number of you around the table and watching also come from that, so one thing I care a lot about is ROI, return on investment, for those of you who aren't coming from business backgrounds. The return on investment has been staggering, actually, so far, in terms of ways in which we've actually been able to leverage NIRA to unlock, at this point now, almost $5.9 million in the last year in federal grants to Evanston. And these federal grants are happening in ways, for example, now I'm looking at Monique, right, I mean, we have so, a good amount of these federal grants coming from, for example, the Smart and Connected Communities Program of National Science Foundation, which is helping to provide, helping to provide important services through Evanstem that wouldn't have been able to happen otherwise, and bringing in Northwestern experts to help to further and deepen that relationship, improving, ensuring better service provision, more access to, in terms of all sorts of aspects of computational making in parts of the community that have been underserved. And, you know, Nicole Pinkard, of course, is the, is a lot of the muscle and brain behind that, you know, I think both brain and broad, in Nicole's case metaphorically. And so we have, when we think about now, the number of researchers who are devoting their time and attention to Evanston, working together with Evanston school districts and community service organizations, and getting money from the other 300-plus million people in America for the 100,000 or so people here in Evanston, that's, that could not have happened without NIRA. And that was exactly the point of this. Or, you know, we have people like Brian Reiser on my faculty. Brian is currently providing professional development instructional coaching to fourth through eighth grade teachers in District 65 to support next-generation science standards for teaching and learning. This is an example of somebody who's been working and providing professional development all around the United States, but thanks to this deeper partnership between the two school districts in Northwestern, now he's doing it in Evanston, too. And that's the type of thing that I think is a real winner. Or, you know, one more, because I know I want to get on to Lila's slide, but just to give you a little bit of sense of the depth here, we have, it's not just SESP faculty. This, NIRA is really helping to leverage faculty from all over Northwestern now. So now, looking at Paul, McCormick, we have a McCormick School of Engineering faculty member, Karen Smilowicz. She's working with District 65 on a transportation study. And the goal here is to save costs while maintaining service in District 65. We're all concerned as a taxpayer, I always am interested in our school districts being as efficient and effective as possible. And so bringing to bear one of the world's greatest logisticians to help District 65 to solve a logistics challenge is something that makes me really proud. And there's many others, and this is just a few examples. So I wanted to bring this up because I know that there's this, there's this sense of urgency and sometimes, I got the sense at the last meeting, that people were, sometimes, some people around the table were thinking, oh, my gosh, okay, when are we going to see action and results on this one thing? And so the point I want to try to help to impress upon everybody is that investing in Evanston, bringing together Northwestern's power with District 65's power and District 202's power, has been my top priority as dean. And I'm really incredibly pleased that the work that my colleagues are doing in conjunction and deep collaboration with our colleagues of both school districts is already paying off in such profound ways that will improve the quality of life for all Evanstonians. I'm completely convinced of that. And so that makes me really happy and excited to put on my purple every day, which actually does happen. So I'm going to hand this over to Lila now, who can go through her slides, and then we'll leave lots of time for questions.
Thank you, David.
Please use the microphone, move it over. And I do want to, this is a silly thing to say because people can't see it right now, but the Comcast cable is actually down. We are recording the meeting. It will come up on tape later on, but we apologize for those who had tuned in tonight. And if this is a problem at the city level, not at Daryl 65.
Thank you, David, for that introduction, and I wanted to second his thank you to the board and the Evanston community for taking your time with us today. To talk a little bit more about the On Track Indicator collaboration, I wanted to quickly go through our goals for this project. In the short term, we're hoping to have predictions of post-secondary persistence. If you recall from our last meeting together, we have, for now, defined persistence as completing five consecutive semesters of post-secondary or a shorter program within that timeframe, and thinking about the aspects of students' experiences that feed those predictions. In the medium term, we're hoping to place thresholds in those predictions and in those student experiences to help address student needs. In thinking about thresholds, we're thinking about, okay, is this group of students sort of high risk or low risk for not persisting in post-secondary? In the longer term, we hope to update for more recent students and policies. You may recall that the study that we're doing at the moment is based on the graduating cohorts of 2012 through 2014, because these are the cohorts for whom we have enough outcome data, but obviously, student experiences have changed over the last few years, and so we would like to continue to update this work as well as support the use of the data that we're advising within the district and refine how it's implemented. For example, shift thresholds as needed and look at persistence in post-secondary, potentially divided out by tiers or types of institutions. More specifically, what this means is that up through the past fourth meeting in May, we were looking at what was feasible, what we could measure well in pulling the data out of the third to be able to do this, particularly for grades, finding models to predict persistence and those sorts of student experiences at grade six through nine. Within the last few months, we have begun the process of working backwards from the end of 12th grade so that we understand where to dig deeper in those earlier grades. We're hoping that by the February meeting, we will have determined final predictions for earlier grade levels, of course, pending continuous updated work, but to have those initial models in place. And by the end of the school year, to have set thresholds for those predictions and for the student experiences in order to be able to address students' needs as early as next year. And beyond, continuing to test predictions with new circumstances and other ways of thinking about post-secondary success. So this slide you saw a version of last time, we are currently, this is just sort of a timeline of our progress, we are currently in this bold section and focusing on high school right now because we're doing this mapping from the end of high school back through the earlier grades. And so as we continue to do this work, we'll be able to dig deeper in earlier grades. Just to look at this in sort of a diagrammatic way, we're hoping to develop models and set thresholds at each of these grade levels for the eighth grade, hopefully, and for nine through 12, looking at the outcome of persistence in post-secondary, and middle school, looking at readiness for high school as defined by whether they have high probability of persisting in post-secondary. For now, what we're looking at is sort of the collective high school experience and comparing the students who do persist in post-secondary to those who don't, and looking at the differences in their experiences there. We are exploring factors that are both trackable and actionable, so things that we are able to measure relatively easily for students and potentially act on. And there are a lot of different ways that we can do that. Recall that we are making sure predictors work for all students regardless of race, ethnicity, et cetera, and that the probabilities that we're calculating for future students come from what we know about the students in the cohorts we're looking at now and how we can use that information. And we're, at the moment, going to show you some information about those factors individually, but models will bring those together and let us know more about the relationship between each factor and post-secondary persistence. Because as I said, there are a million different factors to look at and ways to measure those. We're going to show you examples from just a few. We're looking at grades, attendance, and standardized scores tonight. So when we look at the ACT data, this really highlights why we're doing this work. First of all, you can see that more than half of Evanston students are already meeting the National ACT College Readiness Benchmark. The ACT College Readiness Benchmark for English is an 18, and more than half of Evanston high school students are getting at least a 24 on the ACT English. So this sort of national benchmark doesn't necessarily reflect the experience of Evanston students. And in addition to that, the ACT College Readiness Benchmark is readiness for grades in first-year college courses. And we're hoping to look beyond that first year and get a sort of more complete picture of a student's post-secondary success by being able to look at persistence beyond the second year of post-secondary. So this really shows why we're doing this work here. We can do something that's ETHS-specific, that not only reflects ETHS students, but also their outcomes further down the line. When we think about what this means at earlier grades, where we can be addressing students' needs, we can think about what factors are most predictive, not only for ACT, but also for persistence more broadly. And whereas there's national data connecting, or Illinois data connecting MAPS scores with ACT college readiness benchmarks, we'll here be able with ACT college readiness benchmarks, we'll here be able to look, again, more specifically at the Evanston context, as well as the student broader experiences and how those can help us predict not only ACT scores, but also college persistence. So attendance is sort of a different story. ETHS already has a threshold set for attendance, and that threshold, as you can see in this graph, sort of reflects what's going on with college persistence. So the students with low absenteeism in ninth grade, those who are absent fewer than nine days, seem to persist at rates that are higher than those who are absent nine or more days. And that drop-off sort of shows where we can think about things like thresholds and where to be tracking items. And ETHS fortunately is already tracking this well as compared to post-secondary persistence. What we can do with this project, though, is not only confirm places like this where ETHS does seem to be tracking a factor that is connected with post-secondary success, but also provide thresholds where they, factors where they don't exist yet, or update thresholds in areas where this might not align completely with college persistence. When we think about what this means for earlier grades, we can think about the factors, we're here already looking at ninth grade, but we can think about the factors in sixth through eighth grade that help predict high school attendance. We know that attendance patterns are different for middle schoolers than they are for high schoolers. And so this is a place where we need, again, to think about beyond just attendance, what does that mean to predict this from middle school? Looking at AP test-taking, again, we see a sort of leveling off where we can start to think about a threshold. But I want to stress that this is a prediction, it's not a prescription. So the point, this does not say that taking at least four AP tests will mean that you are necessarily at least 80% likely to persist in post-secondary. It's not causal. It doesn't mean that everyone should take at least four AP tests. It's a small part of a student's overall experiences. AP tests can reflect students' opportunities and access, and we should take into account all of a student's experience when we're thinking about what they should be doing. But the total number of AP tests taken regardless of score does seem to be a place where we can set a threshold for, that we can track and potentially address the variety of students' needs that this reflects. So when we think about, again, when we think about earlier grades, are students prepared to take AP courses? Do they have the access to them? Do they have the opportunity to take them? Do they have the underlying knowledge that they need to be able to participate in them? So then, when we think about those, we can think about what factors in sixth through ninth grades help predict AP test-taking. Grades are highly predictive, but again, this is prediction, not prescription. Unlike attendance and AP tests, we don't have like a clear leveling off point, and so it's a little bit more difficult to think about where we should be setting a threshold for something like grades. And that's where it's really important to think about how these factors combine and students' experiences as a whole. And when we're thinking about earlier grades, again, grades are something like attendance or something that happens in earlier grades, just like they happen later grades. But we can think about not only the variety of other factors that impact their cumulative GPAs by the end of high school, but also what pieces of those grades are sort of most telling? Are we able to predict more based on particular classes that they're taking in earlier grades versus GPA overall? So as you can see, we're looking sort of at the whole high school experience and how that aligns with post-secondary outcomes. And we can start to see places where we dig in earlier, for example, looking at access and opportunity to AP tests. I'm going to hand it back to David for a little summary of NERA overall.
Super. So again, when we think about, one thing I'd like to mention very briefly, I want to underscore something that Lila mentioned that I think is really important, which is when there, the outcome, again, that is the kind of agreed-upon outcome for this first round of analysis trying to predict college success and persistence is, as Lila mentioned, the five consecutive semesters or completion of a degree that's shorter than that at any post-secondary institution. And, you know, I think it's important, one, if you'll indulge me for a statistics lesson for about literally no more than 30 seconds, I think that it's easy sometimes for people to go and say, "Oh, my gosh, what, ETHS, District 65 have low standards," or "Northwestern's advocating low standards, because don't we expect more than that for all kids?" I think, first of all, that's, you know, it's an open question, but the most important thing to keep in mind from a statistical point of view is that you have to have some type of dependent variable. And measurement, how you measure the dependent variable is actually a lot less important than how you measure all the factors that Lila was describing from a statistical point of view. So of course, one of the things we're going to be doing as a team between the two school districts in Northwestern is looking to see if the, if any of the predictors vary depending on if we choose different definitions of college success. But I'm raising this for anybody around the table that, I think, as well as anybody who might be watching this on tape delay, I suppose, that it's actually a pretty unproductive conversation to start talking about the dependent variable about this analysis, when really actually the most important thing is what's happening on the right-hand side. So that said, we're your guests here, and if one wants to talk more deeply about that, I'm more than happy to try to do that, but we don't have a, but from a statistical point of view, I think it's really, really important to focus on the piece that matters the most, which is getting every, all the factors that are engaged in prediction right, and then gauging the degree to which that makes a difference. So, you know, again, in conclusion, right, we're here to talk about not only the On Track Indicator, which is the specific piece that Lila was describing, but we're more than happy to discuss any of the aspects, other aspects involved with NERA. It's a privilege to be representing Northwestern and partnering with people in what I consider to be the best city in the world of Evanston, and I'm really, really happy that we can all be partners together on this effort.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. With that, we can open it up to the board for questions. Who wants to start? Jonathan?
Actually, I have two questions. One is the question of timing. I thought I understood from the presentation that, there was a slide that said October 2018, nine to 12, and then it said, "By February, determine final predictions for earlier grade levels." Does that mean you have already identified the nine to 12 thresholds?
So I think that, I think that that slide that was being here, it's saying, so far, what's being presented tonight is our data from nine to 12. The whole thing is an iterative process, so I don't think we feel confident in saying we've identified precisely where we should be at nine to 12. The fact is, we want to be thinking about all of the factors together as one package.
So when you look at the next, I think it's the next slide that said February 2019? There was something about February.
It's all the way back. I'm clicking it back as fast as I can.
So February 2019 is, it would be, yeah. Yeah, so the aspiration is that by February, that we'll have kind of a solid first pass of the model that is going back in, going back to sixth grade.
Now, this is the hard question. We all agree that we want to use multiple measures, and that it's foolish to rely on a single measure. The problem with multiple measures, of course, is the interrelationship between those measures, right? And so, just as you said, prediction is not prescription. Correlation is not causation, right? And so I'm just, how do you approach the interplay of these factors? Let's, I mean, let's take grades and attendance, for example. It could be that, if they're highly correlated, that students with low grades don't come to school as much. Or it could be that kids who don't come to school as much don't get as good grades. I mean, how do you deal with that?
Well, again, you, in some regards, Jonathan, you actually answered the question, which is that when you think about the, what's the appropriate role of a predictive tool to feed policy and practice, the answer is that, and actually, this is related to something Lila was mentioning. So when we look at something like AP test-taking for a moment, so ETHS is noteworthy in the country for the fraction of students who take at least one AP class. It turns out that that was precisely because the leadership of ETHS paid attention to some really, really important research that said that actually even the aspect of taking AP classes has a very strong positive effect, that was causal, on kids' likelihood of attending and persisting and completing college. But then you might go and take a look at something like this and say, "Okay, well, now is the sweet spot for AP classes?" And that's where you get into correlation, not implying causality. So the role of a predictive model is to go and take a first pass at where might there be particular kids who are at risk in different, along different directions? And are there particular places where you might want to shine the light more deep, more strongly? So suppose we see that there are particular combinations of factors that seem to be strongly related to problem spots. That's when, and maybe different grades. So suppose we're looking, suppose we see that the factors might actually be emerging in sixth and seventh grade. Well, then that would be a charge for District 65 to start to say, "Okay, well, now, what are certain types of policies and practices that might be related to this particular thing?" We may be saying, "Okay, is this causal?" Or is, this may be a potential, it may be potentially causal, it may be the case that we want to go and stimulate increased attendance. That's when I would hope, I would hope that there would be a partnership between some Northwestern researchers and District 65 to be thinking about, "Okay, well, are there potential interventions that might be jointly worked on to help to stimulate increased attendance?" You then go look to see whether that starts to change downstream outcomes, for example. It might be that we say, "Okay, this thing might actually be an indicator of something else. Maybe kids are missing school a lot because of housing insecurity." We know that there are a huge number of kids in Evanston who unfortunately don't have a permanent address, for example. And so that's when you go and, again, a potential relationship between District 65 or District 202 and Northwestern can be to look into what might be other factors, third factors, that could be relating to this. So the point about predictive models are really to help, to serve as a bit of a diagnosis. You know, a health metaphor is actually kind of useful, too, when you think about the fact that there are certain medical tests that we have that are indicators of the potential for, say, cardiac disease, but changing those test numbers don't, changing those test numbers don't change your, you know, just lowering a particular test number doesn't actually reduce your, reduce your risk of cardiac disease. It may be that it's an indicator of something else. It's the same type of thing that's going on here.
So the ultimate model is not a single threshold that's a composite of the multiple factors, but a tracking of each of the factors individually. In other words, you're not going to sort of, you know, say, "Okay, we're going to assign this weight to attendance and this weight to grades and this weight to test scores" in terms of thresholds. At each stage, we would be looking at each of those variables. Is that right?
Well, you know, I would say yes and no. I know that's a very frustrating response, but there is value for the school districts to have a single prediction that's looking at these pieces together. There's also value in then looking under the hood at how the individual factors, what are the various weights of those individual factors that contribute to that prediction? And as Lila was mentioning also, how they might interact with one another. So the one thing that I would, I can't tell my friends who run the school districts what to do, of course. One thing I would personally hope wouldn't have happen is that, is I hope we wouldn't have a situation in which every kid has a number, "Oh, 92, 64, 17," whatever, because that, but rather to say, "Okay, wow, here's a kid who has a 17, and here are the three factors, here are the three risk factors that seem to be particularly contributing to this low, this increased risk of not being successful in post-secondary." And then, of course, using that to simultaneously pay extra attention to the kid who has a 17, as opposed to the 92 perhaps, but then at the same time be using those different weights to help to identify, test, evaluate, refine interventions to help to make sure that the kid with the 17 is, by the time they're finishing ETHS, in an excellent position to be successful in college. Does that help? That's the aspiration. And so in some regards, that's a really great advertisement for why NERA is much more than just this one thing. Because what happens is we have people from across Northwestern who are interested in lots of different areas of this, and there are lots of different problems of practice in both of the two school districts. And so the goal here with NERA is to bring together the people who have the research interest in a given area. Maybe it's reducing stereotype threat among middle schoolers, for example. Or maybe it's, maybe it is about dealing with stress and trauma at home. Or maybe it's, you know, or any of the other, or English language learning. They're all different areas, and we have expertise at Northwestern about that and expertise in the school district. The purpose of NERA is actually to bring together all these dyads from Northwestern and the school district.
Yeah, I really appreciate the framing of this, and again, it forces us and invites us as institutions to really dig deep, right? So I understand, you know, we all have So I understand, you know, we all have high expectations for our children, right? But there seems to be the stereotype, right? And the stereotype is that, you know what, if we don't set the bar higher, if it gets succeeding, then it's the parents' fault, or it's a certain community's fault, or they don't really care about their kids. And that, I think, has been something that institutions have contributed to, right? And as well as federal education law, where we are just so stuck on increasing test scores, when in reality, we know that it's an amalgamation of things that, again, impact student outcomes. So again, I said it the last time you presented, but I'll say it again, I really support this work, and I really support this work because, again, it forces institutions to look at our practice. Because it is a problem of practice and policies that have perpetuated inequity for marginalized communities. And again, to be able to have that conversation and to show us that we can't do it alone at school districts. We need to, one, work together, and then work with other institutions like City of Evanston. I'd love to have City of Evanston also be part of these presentations, because, again, we're having conversations around, you know, around the budget that are going to cut social services that are, again, are crucial for our youth and a lot of families. There's home, so there's issues around affordability for housing. Those things are the things that are causing a lot of these, you know, just differential outcomes. And whatever we can do to provide the data to showcase that and not blame families, blame parents, blame kids for structural, institutional, historical problems that have contributed and exacerbated marginalization, the better. I really appreciate the work that you're all doing.
I'll just respond by saying amen. I totally agree. And I think everybody here among, between the two school districts and Northwestern welcomes this idea that we're, of bringing in more agencies and organizations because we're all part of one ecosystem. So, I mean, again, looking at Monique, right, the McGaw YMCA educates a huge fraction of the youth of Evanston. And so, and again, my colleague Nicole's work, thinking about out-of-school learning, is so crucial to understand the ways in which all the various learning opportunities for children can really help to serve as elevators for kids. So you'll get nothing but complete agreement from those of us at the table with you on that point.
And if I can add in, Nicole and I started the morning together, in a morning breakfast meeting, talking about the influence of out-of-school activities on in-school performance. And so, the database that we're actually creating through NARA will be able, will allow us to explore those questions and really help us think about when we put larger doses of out-of-school STEM activities, we assume that will make a difference in the lives of kids, and this work will allow us to actually explore that.
Other questions or comments? Candace?
I just had a question to the point around the action, and I appreciate the conversation about correlation versus causation, because it would be great if we could just give everyone As and everyone takes an AP test, and then the predictions change.
Kids would love that.
I would love that. I mean, I think we'd all love that, but that's, obviously, it's going to be harder than that. So as we set these thresholds, and let's just take a sixth grade, for example, and you get a few thresholds, have you guys talked about going forward process, or how we would then turn this to action, and what systems that might, you know, get integrated into that already exist within the two school districts to look at students? You know, I'm just wondering whether we've started to think about how we move this into using an implementation to shine a light on potentially at-risk groups, and then what happens to those? What do we do about that, and how do we converse and dialogue around interventions? And/or how do we engage you all to support that process? I'm just curious, obviously, always getting to the next step.
Okay, Candace, I think that that's exactly the right question. I think that ultimately, the way I foresee this happening is, there'll be a set of different, there'll be a set of different risk factors that will be emerging. And then, it becomes a question of, I think that's a place where Northwestern, the Northwestern team can really be more like coaches at that point. Resources for Eric and Paul and their teams, as they're starting to say things like, okay, well, here are, based on our read of, you know, maybe I'm imagining putting myself in Paul's shoes for a moment, maybe as he and his team is getting, is starting to look at this, they identify seven areas where, based on these risk factors, they'd really like to shine a stronger light. Well, maybe among those seven areas, three of those areas are places where District 65 is already doing lots of work. And so, then, a role for Northwestern might actually be to help District 65 to the degree to which you desire it, to think about ways to further evaluate the current work, think about, is there recent research that might be possible to help Stacy and others at the district augment that work? The notion here of, I think, a role of Northwestern can be kind of the R and D side to help the districts to address problems of practice. And then, maybe there might be, say, the other four might have been areas that District 65 hadn't been paying as close attention to before. Well, then, a role of Northwestern might be to go and bring together, do what actually we've done on a few different occasions in the past, to say, okay, let's bring together all the Northwestern researchers who are expert in this particular topic, one particular topic, and just have a conversation where you have district experts and Northwestern experts together, and think about, do we know of something that has been research-tested elsewhere that might be able to be applied to Evanston? Is there the will and interest and desire to try that type of thing out in Evanston? That's exactly how I see us working together. But I think in every case with the research relationship between Evanston School Districts and Northwestern, the impetus, the questions have to come from the school districts, have to come from the problems of practice. And fortunately, there are so many problems of practice that the school districts are interested in. I mean that, okay, I'm sorry, that was me speaking from a point of view of a university administrator, I'm sorry. Regrettably, there are so many problems of practice that we are all, that the districts are facing, that there's no shortage of double coincidence of interest between--
I mean, our focus on continuous improvement is amazing.
Precisely, precisely. I mean, the great news is, all of us have the aspiration that the children of Evanston will be the most successful children in the world, right? And so, defined in many different dimensions. And so, I think none of us want to stop until that's the case. So, but that's exactly how I kind of foresee this.
But let's underscore that your commitment as dean and your commitment as the university is to actually explore questions that we are curious about as opposed to coming to us to do research on us. And with all respect to all the rest of the great universities in the land, Northwestern is putting a stake in the ground to say that we're committed to actually explore with us the challenges and opportunities we have in both of these two settings called our two school districts.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Okay, well, with that, thank you very much for the presentation.
Can I do one real quick thing? I apologize. A new member of the District 65 team who's going to be working closely with the NARA group is Kylie Klein, who joins us back there, and we want to welcome Kylie. She's the new Director of Research Accountability and Data, and joins us from the Consortium on Chicago School Research at that other university, the University of Chicago, and another fine example of a research partnership that really provides information and data for the improvement of kids in Chicago. And so, we're excited to have Kylie join the team and work with all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to the next presentation when we meet next. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Our next discussion item will be the reading goal update.
This is Stacy and Pete. We'll just let them jump right in.
We'll let them set up.
So you think it's pointless, do you?
Yeah. Yes. 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 Okay, well, Stacy, if you want to just go ahead and get us started, they can join us later.
I will do that. So this evening, first off, thank you for the time and the opportunity to update both boards on the work that is going on around our joint literacy goal. This evening, I'll give a little background, a little bit of an overview of the District 65 work in progress, as was outlined in the memo, and then District 202 will do similar before we open up for questions. So just taking a look, a little bit of background, as you saw in the memo, and for many of you that were on the boards at this point, we're discussing the joint literacy goal tonight, which was really enacted in January of 2014 with a focus on disciplinary literacy called out in the summer of 2014. And that goal is that District 65 and 202 will ensure that all students are proficient readers and college and career-ready by the time they reach the 12th grade. This is a goal that our community partners, including Cradle to Career and Foundation 65, have also had an active hand in helping to really think about, address, and support both in-district and outside collective impact work as we take this on together. The diagram on the right is a quick lens in which District 65 really tries to look at this work. The goal specifically called out disciplinary literacy as a key approach and lever for reaching this goal. Disciplinary literacy, when we take a look at Shanahan's work, really talks about the fact that in our earliest grades, it is ensuring that we have a strong, high-quality, basic literacy experience that feeds into intermediate literacy and then disciplinary literacy. We do tend to ideas of disciplinary literacy in our content areas, particularly in our intermediate to middle school grades. A lot of our focus over the last three years, actually, this is the third year, but two years, has been on creating that very strong foundational literacy experience in our youngest grades. To give a quick sense of the way we view this work, our work began by really establishing a literacy framework. That literacy framework was established in our K3. It was established in collaboration with our educators in taking a look at research in the field and taking, getting feedback from a variety of sources in that process. That K3 literacy framework was completed, and we have been in the process of enacting that with the Professional Learning Plan over the last two years. We've also, over the last two years, built out a 4-8 literacy framework that is an extension of that work and creates an alignment K8. Our final step will be to return to pre-K and make sure that we have an aligned set of practices that are research-based and that are best practices in the field. That framework creates an outline for our literacy work that we then use to identify curriculum development, material selection, and professional learning. So when we take a look at this, we have the literacy framework in place as a foundation. We then take a look at program evaluation and review. We design professional learning and instructional coaching that are connected and part of that work. We then work with our educators and monitor the implementation of that work. And this is an ongoing, continuous improvement cycle. We take a look at a variety of measures. We do pay attention to MAP and DRA, which are ongoing measures three times a year for us, and then we take a look at pre- and post-assessments on our units and ongoing feedback from educators and assessment data to evaluate that work and continue to improve it. The memo took a look at nine categories and groups, taking a look at our literacy measures as well as particular racial and ethnic groups. Here, I have the same data, just framed in a little bit of a different way. To note in the memo, we noted, we called out that in kindergarten and first grade, eight of the nine subgroups that we highlighted all have shown increased academic improvement using the DRA literacy assessment as a monitor. Now, the DRA assessment is a one-to-one literacy assessment that we give kindergarten through third grade. We then begin giving the MAP assessment, which is a computerized reading assessment, in the third grade, and we give that through eighth grade. So we do lean on two different measures to evaluate literacy progress. We are also, at this point, piloting a new one-to-one literacy assessment called STEP in two of our schools that we also feel elevates the level of rigor and demand in regards to literacy learning, and we're evaluating that assessment as we speak this year. And we're going to take feedback from our educators and our coaches and our other literacy leadership in the district to determine whether we move forward with that assessment tool or not. What is consistent certainly across the data in the packet and in this slide is that our work is having much more traction and impact in K1 at this time. We have just entered our third year of professional learning in that work. An example of the work that we're doing and have done in our K1 space, one of the things that was clear in our literacy framework was that we needed to pay greater attention to the language work that was happening in our classrooms. And so, we added Language Workshop, which is now something that we're working on elevating kindergarten through eighth grade. And at Language Workshop, we pay particular attention to essentially the way words work, which gets down into individual sounds and phonics and phonemes. It gets into word parts, it gets into vocabulary, and it gets into students' ability to engage in discourse and critical conversation around text. And so, in our literacy framework, that comes into practice when we do shared reading, which we adopted a new curricular material in our kindergarten and first grade spaces two years ago, when we do our word work through Words Their Way. And we have, we're looking at several different pilots in our Tier 2 phonics work in an effort to make sure that when we look at a lot of these numbers, we have about 80% of our kids that are meeting our DRA benchmarks. But that means then we need to think about Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions for students that are not yet meeting those benchmarks. And so, the Language Workshop work was year one for our K1 educators. We've continued to support that through our coaching, and then we moved on to a very, to a curricular resource that guides the mini lessons for our reading workshop instruction. And then, this year, we're looking at how these elements all come together into a consolidated literacy block that has a mini lesson in each of the key areas of reading, writing, and language on a daily basis, and comes in the form of whole group and small group instruction for our students, so that we're meeting the needs of our students at different levels. In second and third grade, we're taking a deep dive, because that work has not yet impacted our learners in the way that we would hope. That group began with our focused reading workshop instruction in the first two years and is now adding the Language Workshop component right now. And so, we're adding the Language Workshop component and seeing how these elements come together within our work while evaluating the impact with our educators and our coaches. When we take a look at our MAP performance, sorry, it's a little small up there at the moment, but this is the same data that we reported, both the last slide and this slide, is data that we've reported to the District 65 board previously. We see a small increase as we finished up the school year '18 in the percentage of students that were making expected gains, and we see a small decrease in the percentage of students in the 25th percentile, both of which are steps in the right direction. But we see these as small indicators, and our work is to see sustained growth. True change takes place over multiple years of growth in that direction. We have a small decrease in the percentage of students meeting college readiness benchmarks. However, we also saw an 8% increase in students making expected gains for our students that were not yet at college readiness benchmarks. So we could see that underneath that data, there's a group of students that exceeded our growth expectations, and that we're working to get that group up to the college readiness benchmarks. Just to, in a final kind of piece, I want to contextualize our literacy work. Our literacy work is extremely important. Our commitment to this goal is deep, and, you know, we commit a lot of time and energy and resources to making this happen. This does not happen in isolation, however. The thing that I think is extremely important is that this happens in the context of other work. In order for our literacy work to take the traction-- In order for our literacy work to take the traction, we also value and lift our school climate work. Our students need to be able to show up and be who they are. They need to be safe in their spaces. They need to be able to take risks. We are, have dug into Zaretta Hammond's, Dr. Hammond's work on culturally responsive pedagogy. She talks about the necessity of learning partnerships and learning environments in that work, and that's the school climate work that District 65 has been committed to over several years. We're also deepening our multi-tiered systems of supports. Talked a few minutes ago about the fact that we are doing a good bit of work curriculately at the Tier 1 level, which is whole class. And then what we've also framed with our disciplinary leads is that our work is Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. If you are the head of literacy, if you're the head of math, you're thinking about what's the Tier 1 instruction, as well as what are the aligned Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions for students that are not yet making the progress that we want them to make. And so when we think about this, Donna Cross is our lead of MTSS. We've just adopted a new tool to support educators in writing improved intervention plans and having greater support in monitoring those plans over time to measure impact. And we are assessing the tools that we have and can make, the assessment tools and the resources to support those plans as the year, as the work goes on. Culturally responsive pedagogy, we had over 350 educators engage in two days of professional learning at the beginning of the year. They'd already completed the Beyond Diversity experience, and so trying to bring those two experiences together to, again, build learning experiences that have cognitive rigor, have, are built with, you know, have equity and awareness designed into them and have safe learning environments. And so that's the equity learning and culturally responsive pedagogy. At this point, I'm going to hand over to 202.
Thank you, Stacy. My name is Scott Bramley. I'm one of the associate principals at Evanston Township High School. Thanks for having me. It is a pleasure and an honor to be invited back to the table to be talking about reading with you tonight. It's been about two years since I've been here, so for those of you who know me, hello. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our setup for the report and what our thinking was in our conversations within District 202 and between 202 and 65. Obviously, when we adopted this goal, we talked about having all of our students being reading proficient by the time they left our high school. So we realized that we really haven't given a snapshot that way of data to really think about where are our students right now as it relates to reading proficiency. And so this evening, Ms. Brown, my colleague here, who has been leading our efforts in the school as our school-wide reading specialist, will talk you, talk to you about some of those data points, a little bit of a snapshot. We decided to pull out some of those data into a different presentation here off of the memo, so you have the memo, those of you who have read through that. We wanted to present some information in a different way, just to kind of show you our incoming freshmen, our ninth graders right now, the past two years, where are they in terms of reading proficiency? Give you that snapshot for you. So I also wanted to thank Stacy for some of the pieces that she talked about with the complimentary work. It's extremely exciting to know that we're doing the similar types of work in both districts because when we have a joint goal, our work doesn't always intersect. It won't always intersect, but where it does is in this transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. And so as we continue to look at our multi-tiered system of supports, we are working on individual plans for students. We are working on framing our response and our instructional practice within our larger MTSS framework. So it's really exciting to know that both school districts are in that same best practice at the same time. I will also note that we too are reading some of Dr. Hammond's work, Zaretta Hammond, and we have, a team of our instructional coaches are going to her workshop. Our leadership team is reading her book, Culture Responsive Instruction in the Brain. And that's extremely exciting that we have that across both districts. So I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Brown.
Hi, I'm Kiwana Brown. Thanks for having me here too. It's probably been about two or three years since the last time I presented with Scott and Pete here. So we wanted to, like Scott said, give you guys a snapshot of just where our students are coming into ninth grade as far as their reading proficiency. And we wanted to give you at least two years of comparative data just to see where they were coming in two years ago and where they are now. So looking at this first slide, we're looking at our black female students. In 2017, we had approximately 33% of our students who were coming in, or 35, out of 105 students coming in who were actually reading proficient. We've seen an increase, as we have for pretty much every demographic of student, increase from 33% to about 52% coming in this year. For our Hispanic or Latino females, we've also seen an increase from about 33 students out of 72 coming in in 2017 to 42 students out of 86 who were reading proficient. Our white females, which is typically the highest when it comes to reading proficiency overall, because the numbers decreased, we see a decline in the number of students who are reading proficient, but the overall percentages, they don't change much. So we still have a high number of white females coming in who are reading at proficient levels. For black males, again, this is an example where the numbers declined, but we can see that in 2017, we had 33 students who were reading proficient. Percentage just will be a little higher because we had 33 students in 2018 who were reading proficient, but our incoming total was slightly lower. So we have a higher number of black male students coming in reading at a proficient For Hispanic male students, Latino male students, there's also an increase of students coming in in 2018 who are reading proficient, although again, we had a slight decrease in the number of students overall who were enrolled at ETS or who took the STAR test. But overall, there was an increase of students coming in reading proficient. And then lastly, our white males, again, even though not as high as the white females, they're still one of the highest when it comes to reading proficiency. A slight decrease in the enrollment, but overall, they are reading proficient.
I just wanted to offer, one of the things that we did was we took the tables that are in the memo and tried to present those in these stacked columns, just to give you a visual, a better visual of how many students are actually at proficiency versus the total number of students in each of those demographic populations. So the other thing I wanted to just point out is that the data that we used here is from our STAR reading assessment. We've been using that for several years, ever since we adopted this goal, actually. And it's allowed us to look at a number of different pieces of data. However, tonight, what we presented were the reading proficiency thresholds based on scale score. Scale score, which Ms. Brown will explain to you right now why we chose that measure.
So we, we look at scale score in STAR. It's not comparative to MAP, so if you're kind of wondering how does STAR and MAP compare, they don't. And not at all, they don't compare. STAR actually goes up to a 1,400, so a student who hits a 1,400 or close to it is considered post-secondary. Students in ninth grade, we're looking for them to come in at about a 900 or between a 900 and 950 scale score, which shows that they are reading proficient. So that's the measure that we use when we looked at this data. We also wanted to just mention that when we, when we have this data, we often use it to create our curriculum around where students are. So the fact that we have such a high number of students who come in reading proficient, a higher number than we had in 2017, we still use those, the numbers to create the curriculum around where our students' needs are. And within STAR, there's various domains that we look at, and it tells us very specifically where students are and where their needs are. And so we build our curriculum around where students' needs are when they enter the school. We meet with our teachers. We create a curriculum based off of where students are and what their needs are. And teachers are very responsive to creating curriculum to where students' needs are. Students are assessed several times throughout the year, especially if they are placed in reading courses based off of incoming MAP scores. So we often do progress monitoring using STAR data to maintain where students are and also to see how we can improve their instruction independently.
So from the, from the slides that we presented, just the charts, graphs that we presented, just wanted to point out that obviously we see some increases in students coming in more ready. However, we recognize that we still have a lot of room to grow, as Candace said, to continuous improvement. We have students who are not ready, that are reading proficient, coming into the high school. And so we have several efforts underway at the, at the high school to try to address all of our students' needs. A couple of them were highlighted in the memo, but for the purposes of tonight, obviously being the joint meeting, we wanted to make sure that we talked about some of the intersections of our work as opposed to our individual District 202 update. However, you have questions about that, we can certainly respond to them today.
Scott and Kiwana, so obviously, we see needs with students, and we know how vital reading is for all of their learning. Could you talk a little bit about what we've done in recent years to add reading teachers and teachers with reading endorsements and how that factors in to our commitment?
So maybe three years ago, we looked to partner with Northeastern Illinois University, who has a very outstanding reading program. And we were looking to recruit teachers at ETS who were interested in becoming endorsed or to attain a reading master's. Didn't quite work out about three years ago, but as of last year, spring of 2017, we had roughly 10 teachers who are actually in the cohort, they have a cohort, and half of the classes, more than half of the classes, actually are held at the, the building at ETS. And I have the privilege to adjunct for several of those classes as well. And the cohort, the cohort is actually almost done with our first cohort. In the summer, they'll be either reading specialist certified, or they'll be reading endorsed. In addition to that, we have offered, extended the offer to District 65, as well as neighboring schools, Niles and a couple of others who may be interested in seeking reading endorsements or reading masters for their teachers as well. And they can participate in the cohort with ETS teachers.
So there are 10 teachers in the group?
Currently, yes.
Currently, 10. And it's, you said it's almost done, right?
They're almost done. In summer, in the summer of 2019, they'll be complete. And we're looking to start a new cohort for spring of 2019. I can't believe these years go by so fast. Spring of 2019. So we're currently recruiting right now for, for teachers for that cohort.
And that's open for D65 teachers as well as, you said, Niles, well?
I just want to add that one of the, in terms of like local impact, I think one of the most exciting aspects of that program, now we have a group of 10 teachers who we can have serving students in a different capacity in the school, or just enriching the experiences of the students in their content-specific or discipline-specific courses. However, in addition to that, we also have the opportunity to help students in a one-to-one Tier 3 reading lab experience on our campus. That was a huge piece for us as we negotiated this with the support of our board, to be able to offer incentives to our teachers, to be able to participate, some fee reimbursements and some incentives on our salary schedule, to be able to get a cohort of teachers committed to literacy in the district. Now, when, instead of taking their, their time and energies and focus to Northeastern Illinois University's campus, working with students in Chicago, which is wonderful, however, they'll be in our lab in our community, working with our students, definitely our high school students, and hopefully, as we continue to have our work intersect with District 65, students from District 65 as well, being able to benefit from that cohort.
And I just wanted to add one more thing, just to kind of erase the narrative that reading teachers are English teachers. In this cohort, we have three science teachers, five special ed, and three English teachers.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Awesome. Do we have questions from the board?
Benson has a question.
First of all, I really need a new chair. This one is really bad. So I just, when I'm done with my question, I might be disruptive, and I'm going to get up and just go get the new one that's waiting over there. And I just want to explain why I've been squirming. I'm sort of low down, too. Thanks very much for the presentation. Just one quick question and then one sort of observation, is there some reason why we couldn't get more data? You know, we didn't get a report on our progress on the reading goal last year. And I guess, I like your bar graphs and the graphs and these representations that show in a very visual way the kind of progress we're making and where we still need to make progress. Why didn't we go all the way back to the beginning of our reading goal? Why don't we have that for 2014? I think in an earlier presentation, somebody was saying, you know, a year-to-year change doesn't tell us very much about whether we're actually making progress. You really need, you know, a group of years to be able to gauge that, and that seems sort of obviously missing here. And I don't know why. Can, can we get that? I mean, it can't be that hard to get, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely, we can.
I mean, and we really should be looking at it and monitoring it and checking in on it all the time. So I just, you know, I wish, I wish we could have that. And maybe we could, I could make a very specific ask that we get that follow-up so we could see it. That'd be great.
Absolutely. Yeah, we monitor it internally in terms of looking at growth percentiles. So within the STAR system, they use a system known as Student Growth Percentiles, and we can kind of track growth from ninth grade through 11th grade. We can track cohort data from.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did the goal in 2014, as you observed, and I just think this has got to be, I can't imagine anything more important than we're doing than getting our kids to be able to read. I mean, because we know if they can't read, they can't do anything else. I just, it's so, so fundamental, foundational, and that's why we adopted the joint reading goal. That's why it's the singular focus of Cradle to Career, you know, our community-wide collective impact effort. And, and I think it's something, as, as our two districts, as a community, we should be enormously proud that we are trying to have this singular focus. And so I think being able to tell a story in a way that's understandable to the, to the public that should care about this, and I think does care about this, you know, I've been hoping for a better dashboard around achievement data in our district for a long time, and we still haven't quite managed it. But this, this is like one piece that I think we could really pull out and highlight and make crystal clear, so we all know what we've accomplished and what we still need to do, not to beat a dead horse. And then my second, second thing real quickly is, I wonder if anybody else in the room saw this editorial in the New York Times this weekend called "Why Are We Still Teaching Reading the Wrong Way?" And I suspect the reading instructors probably did see it. I think it's, it's talking a little bit more about how reading teachers and teachers in general are prepared to teach when they're learning this in school themselves, and less about how we develop policies. But I'm just curious about your reaction to the editorial, because, you know, in a nutshell, the takeaway for me was that, you know, this ongoing conflict, I guess, between whole language instruction and phonetic instruction, that seemed to be at the core of this editorial. Thoughts?
So I'll just start off by saying, you asked a question, if, if a specific request would be helpful, extremely. So if there is specific data that you'd like to see around the goal and out of STAR, absolutely for everybody.
I want to see, I mean, I thought we had talked about how we were going to report out our progress towards this goal back when we established the goal, although I think we were always, unfortunately, a little mushy about it. But I think at a minimum, we need the data you've reported here tonight by grade level. And of course, we have this issue of aligning the two districts, and you're using these two different mechanisms. And I thought we were going to come up with something that was going to work, that made us, that would help us to understand year-to-year, district to district.
Maybe I could speak to all of that, just real quickly. First of all, that's exactly why we use the STAR assessment, and we're actually pre-testing and post-testing every student in the high school every year. So we have, to the data you're asking about, we can give you an abundance of data because we've been doing it now for five years.
I don't think we need to drown in it, and I, and I appreciate that very much, but just this, going back to 2014, what we have, you know, today, I think would be great.
Correct.
I mean, the goal is for 12th grade, so.
Correct. So what we, what we have identified is that we get a lot of students who have huge reading needs when they arrive at the high school. And we realize that we may not be able to get all of them to the level that we want them at, but we, we do consider it our responsibility that we have them for four years, and we need to measure their growth, and we need to see, so if a child comes in at, reading at the fifth or the sixth grade level, and they do, we, we need to be measuring, how, how much growth can we get in the four years that they're at the high school? We'll be glad to provide that data. The STAR assessment is a wonderful tool because it not only gives you that, that data of where they are and what their growth is, but it actually points you to instructional strategies and areas of instruction that the child needs to improve their reading. This idea of the editorial, if I could, could kind of distill it down to the whole language versus the phonics, what we decided along go. the phonics, what we decided along go, is we're not in that war. We understand that different students need different strategies. And when certain strategies have not worked as well for them for maybe several years, we need to then try other strategies for those students. So we don't pick a methodology. What we do is we take a look at the best research on all the different ways to teach reading, and we then apply them with the STAR assessments pointing us to their instructional needs, to the kind of reading instruction that's going to have the best results.
That's great.
And so we will be glad to not only share many years of data, how the students have come to us, what we've been able to do in the four years that they have been at the high school, but also the kind of strategies that we have used, that we have learned work differently for different students.
So we get all that from the STAR?
Yes, we do.
We get...
Yeah, we...
I know it spits out a...
We didn't try to bury you in all, you know, we were looking at the transition, you know, to ninth grade tonight. We didn't want to bury all of you with that. But believe me, we have very specific data. And that's why we now, we have reading specialists, we have endorsed reading teachers, we have added, it's not just those 10. We've hired all sorts of reading specialists. We have an army of people who now are able to help students learn to read, because we realize, as Scott and Kiwanah said, it has to be integrated into all of their content areas and integrated into everything they do in the four years. Because we only have them four years. And sometimes I wonder how much the second semester, senior year counts. So we maybe really only have three and a half years to succeed in helping them to grow in a very measurable way in their reading, and we'll be able to show that to you.
Good point.
And Gretchen, just similarly on the K8 space, the reason we dove in to write the literacy framework was to really take a look at what are the critical elements that need to happen. And that editorial really laid an dichotomy of explicit instruction to whole language. And our answer is not, it's certainly not all the way in whole language. It's defining the practices, thank you for my pen back, that do work. And then we want, you know, my diagram earlier was around continuous improvement. We've made some real advances in our K1 space by paying attention to some of the real rules and codes that have to be paid attention to in early literacy. But we're continuing to look at that and determine whether we have done a good enough job of that yet. And we know there are still kids that some of our work is not working for. And so we're taking a look at what, we know, we also know what reading interventions we have in place. We have reading interventionists in all of our 12 schools that serve K5. And we're taking a look at what needs are we filling with our current expertise and staffing? And are there areas that we need to build out further to meet the needs of our kids? So reading our kids, reading our data, listening to our practitioners and our community to figure out what it is that we need to do to best serve learners in service of this goal.
I'm going to go get a new chair. Thank you so much.
I have to say, this is very frustrating. I feel like we're stuck in Groundhog Day. Year after year, well, we've got MAP and we've got STAR, and MAP is wonderful and STAR is wonderful, and too bad they don't integrate or work it all together. And this report, you know, this is not a joint report. This is a compilation of a report from District 65 and a report from District 202. And it's just really frustrating to see, I mean, Mr. Bramley said he was extremely excited to find that we're doing similar work. I would hope that wouldn't be a discovery, that that wouldn't, that the work would be ongoing on a collaborative, integrated basis. And then we look at the ninth grade numbers, and the ninth grade numbers are students who are in the fall of ninth grade. So they've just come from District 65. And unless I'm reading these numbers right, because maybe it's because of the different measures we use, they're reading better at the beginning of ninth grade than they were at the end of eighth grade. It just, I think we need to bring some kind of actual closer collaboration together to make this all work.
I would actually like to suggest that we adopt STAR, grades three through 12. That doesn't mean that District 65 would need to abandon MAP, because it has a lot, and I've used it in my other districts. It gives very important information. The problem is, it tops out in the high school. It is not a useful measure for students in high school grades. Whereas STAR can measure growth easily from third grade all the way through 12th. So it seems to me that we could have one measure that has a continuum of assessment and information. But neither district would have to abandon the other things that it does, because STAR can be given so rapidly and so easily using technology. Basically, at the high school level, it's 20 minutes in the fall and 20 minutes in the spring. Maybe at the elementary level, it's 40 minutes in the fall and 40 minutes in the spring. I don't know. But the point is, this is not, does not take days and days to administer. And yet, we would have one measure all the way through, and we wouldn't be asking anybody to abandon anything that's useful for them.
So Eric, I agree, that that's part of the solution. But also, you know, one of the things I'd really love to see is actionable, so D-65 is over here, we're doing K to second, we had our focus there, and we're going to move on to the higher grades. I know we're looking, ETH is looking at ninth grade and what that transition is. For me, in my experience and just in regards to transitions, you know, that is such a critical part, especially for marginalized students, for marginalized communities. It's those transition pieces where we really need to think about, you know, what do we do to, and this is what we're doing here, is looking at the data to kind of help us look at that transition. But again, we're here over kindergarten, K2, you know, ETH is in ninth grade, so I share a bit of Jonathan Baum's frustration. But also, you know, I think, I'm thinking about something that's actionable, right? And I think one of the most powerful things I've been part of, and I've observed, is that, so again, looking at, for instance, the pre-K to kindergarten transition. And Cradle to Career, I think they did it, for two years in a row, they brought together pre-K teachers from across the different programs in early childhood here in Evanston, with, together with their kindergarten teachers. And they had a summit, and they sat down and talked and figured out, what are your expectations? What are you teaching your kiddos in pre-K? Here are our expectations in kindergarten. And for me, that is part of something that's actionable as well. On top of, you know, getting an assessment or a screener that, again, aligns throughout our continuum. But again, also building those relationships, and I love, love, I would love to see. And I asked this question at my kiddos, my eighth graders' parent-teacher conference. I asked teachers, so do you communicate with any of the ETHS teachers, I mean, language arts teachers? And they're like, well, you know, not really. So for me, again, you know, in order to kind of close that opportunity gap, I mean, I really need to, we really need to build those relationships between our educators as well and provide that space, right? That is eventually going to benefit all our kids, and particularly our marginalized students.
I can just briefly speak to the assessment piece. In District 65, we are, we've done work over the last year and continue to do work to really look at our assessment calendar and our assessment suites and the kind of tiers and purposes of different types of assessments. And one of our, you know, our challenges, we do, in essence, it sounds fairly nice and easy to give a 20 to 40-minute assessment in the fall and the spring to our students. Right now, our students are engaged in a one-to-one literacy assessment three times a year. They're taking MAP three times a year. They have a variety of ongoing assessment. And we really, as a whole, are trying to step back and say, which elements of assessment need to continue, and how are they aligned to our system? Both program evaluation and ongoing progress monitoring assessments, things along those lines. We also have an unknown with the state and our state accountability assessment in grades three through eight. We know that it will be given third through eighth, but it's really up in the air at this point about what it is, how long it will be, and, you know, where that's going to go. And so I think for us, it isn't, I don't think we are truly in a position where we can add. We need to evaluate the tools we have and determine which tools are best serving the whole of the community and the whole of the district. And so, and we also, when it comes down to technology, need to negotiate CARTs, and our K5 spaces will not become one-to-one spaces. So we have, it does, that lifting of technology-based assessments can be more challenging. So, you know, I think, you know, I think there can be conversations about whether we are in the right assessment, but I think adding is not a possibility for us at this time.
Could I?
Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm hearing some short-term, so as a board member, A, I don't think the discussion here should be about what assessments. That's the decision of our administrators based on what we're trying...
Yeah, I mean, within...
No, I understand. I'm just saying, I don't want, for me, I don't want to continue, I don't want to go there. But I think what we need as a board is, we adopted a goal that said, we want every student to be, and maybe part of it is that we had both reading proficient and college career-ready by 12th grade. And that was four and a half years ago. And we, today, I don't have a way to say, are we closer to that goal by 12th grade? Are we further away from that goal? I have ways to do that at K3. We're now seeing some ninth grade data, I think, as a very near term, which doesn't seem like it should be too difficult. We could get, I like the way the data is presented in that we have a 2015 baseline for the DRA data. Can we get a 2015 baseline for STAR? And then comparatively, how that's changed year-to-year for ninth through 12th? So that we can at least see, understanding that they're two different measures and they're not going to flip right now. But I'm kind of, John, I'm putting that problem aside and at least saying, can we get an order of magnitude understanding, are we closer to this goal or are we further away from this goal? And then I do think it's incumbent on our teams to figure out, is that as close as we can get, based on our constraints in our two districts? Or is there something closer that we can get there? But it's really hard, as a board member, to look at a goal that we set and say, I have no way of assessing our progress towards this goal, acknowledging that there's really great work that's happening in both districts. So that, I think, for me, that's where the, that's where the crux of it is.
I agree. And I think, you know, when I look at a graph like this one, my issue is that these two bars are 100% different students.
Right.
And so, looking longitudinally at a cohort, let's assume that MAP and STAR are giving educational teams what they want, which is an assessment that says how well kids can read. Right? You should be able to put a third grade through 12th grade slides together for this year's 12th grade cohort that goes all the way back to third grade, that says for the cohort of all the students and by all the sub-demographic groups of students, what percentage of kids are meeting the expected target with a line between eighth and ninth grade that says the assessment has changed here? So that we're acknowledging the change. And we can see from third to eighth grade, are we having, as an organization, a positive impact on that cohort of kids? And then from ninth to 12th grade, are we having a positive impact on that part, that cohort of kids? I don't see why that's so challenging. I imagine that's done internally all the time. And if it's not, that's a specific request. Because I agree, it's not about the assessment. I'm assuming it's telling you guys that kids are able to read. But the slides don't tell a story right now that's measurable.
Also, I want to say that a story that's missing from here is our early childhood piece. So so many of our kids are coming into kindergarten not ready for kindergarten. And we don't have an assessment for that. We can tell a student's achievement by the academic achievement of their parent, their mother, you know? And connecting the two, at the high school, you know, our young mothers that are putting kids back into District 65. This is a community initiative, and I really just strongly feel like early childhood is missing from this work, because so many of our kids are going into kindergarten reading. I know that my kid in kindergarten, she was reading. And so I think that in revisiting these goals, we have to include our kids ready for kindergarten. And what are we doing as a community with all of these pieces to ensure that they are kindergarten-ready?
On the side, one final positive. After reading the New York Times article, I then went to, as a kindergarten parent, I went to a parent-teacher conference and was wildly impressed with the presentation of how my child was being taught how to read. And I thought that was phenomenal. And if that's what's being taught to the teachers over the past few years and the development of the educators, that was fantastic, because it had a full body of work that was going into teaching kids how to read from a lot of different angles.
Thank you.
So on the early childhood piece, Rebecca, to respond a little bit to that, I agree with you that I think that's missing in the overall discussion. I know Stacy did mention that part of the next steps is looping back and looking at pre-K, but I would argue that we need to look even before pre-K. Paul and I were just at the Erickson Institute as part of their early childhood program. I think they're doing some exciting work that we can follow up with them on how potentially we can bring that into the community to look at how we are preparing our youngest children to get to kindergarten and be kindergarten-ready. I think obviously that's a focus of Cradle to Career as well. So I think we still need to continue the push on that. But there is some work that is being, is happening, and hopefully, we can report more specifically on it soon. I'm actually also interested, if we can, because that was, what Joey said was kind of one of my questions, is, understanding that we have the different assessments, is there still not a reason that we can't get cohort data, like Joey said, with kind of the line between eighth and ninth grade, that recognizes there's a difference? Is there so, there's got to be some correlation that would make that a useful narrative to tell? And if not, could you respond to why that isn't going to be useful or why we can't do that?
You know, at the moment, I think we each, each district really has their own individual student data, and we're reporting on our individual student data. And so, you know, possibly that's a nearer question or part of the work that David's group is doing, will create some opportunities to see more of that K12 trajectory. You know, a few years ago, there was a report where we really tried to draw the trend lines, and we saw the, you know, kind of the trend lines and how they connected to high school. But because of data and data rights, you know, I work with my District 65 data, I don't see the 202 data and vice versa. So I think we're really within our own systems right now, working with the data that we have, and understanding that in our own assessments, we can, we dig in and are working to make kids stronger and stronger readers within our context. And so I think it would be more of a global project between districts.
And the piece of the puzzle here that's frustrating is that the STAR and the MAP are not aligned.
Right.
So that's where telling that story is difficult. So we could tell the, as people suggest, that the MAP story over time, and our colleagues can tell the STAR story over time, there's not that exact, there's not a match or a correlation, and I don't know whether or not...
We know that.
We know.
We know that.
Right.
That's the assumption that all the educators seem to accept.
I'm curious, though, students arrive, I'm guessing, if, loving to know if this is incorrect, that students arrive at ETHS and records of their MAP performance arrive with them. So I'm just curious if their MAP performance says that they're proficient readers and STAR also says that? Or if there are occasions where MAP says that students are proficient and then STAR says that it's not? Do we at least have that correlation data?
So we do have instances where that happens. But again, when our students come, they do, well, they're placed in their classes based off of their highest MAP score. So if their MAP score says that they're proficient, they're placed in classes that, where they have to demonstrate proficiency. If MAP says that they're not, they're placed in reading support classes based off of their MAP RIT band scores, which we moved from Princeton's house a couple of years ago. So they're placed in courses that aligns to where their MAP score says they are. So if they're identified later by a teacher who says, well, I think this student is probably struggling in reading, then they'll come to me and they'll have an individual assessment where I can determine whether or not they may need additional support.
Can I follow up on Anya's question? So that most of the time, is the MAP score an accurate reflection of their reading proficiency that we can use in ninth grade, or is it not?
It's useful as a placement, as a placer. Anything beyond that, we don't really have extended data. So if students show that they need development in certain areas, we don't have that type of extended data that we get from STAR.
No, and I don't think the question is saying that, we, I think we understand that STAR is something that's useful at the high school, and so, you know, carry on. I think the idea is, though, is there really no story that we can tell for students from third grade to 12th grade with the data that we currently collect? And even if it is at the eighth to ninth grade point to say, well, we're using different assessments and there's an, you know, X percent variation in what the data in eighth grade is telling versus ninth grade around reading proficiency? But that at least it still has some sort of... But that at least it still has some sort of, something that we can look at to see that trajectory.
I mean, the variability isn't huge, right? You've got a 60%, this is third through eighth, but we are, I don't know exactly what eighth grade is, but it might be a little higher, it might be a little lower, but we've got 60% MAP scores in reading over the course of third through eighth, and we've got 66, according to this, but that was an increase. So, I mean, it's not, generally speaking, it's not going to be hugely, it's not going to be a huge different populat, it's not like one says 80% and one says 10. The individuals and then we don't know, right? But there's...
Right. And we're not asking for that individual data, we're asking for just the overall, so...
So, it depends on language. We have a, if we pull back, we have an issue with some of the language we use. College readiness benchmark is one. MAP college readiness benchmarks versus now, we're doing SAT. We'll be doing PSAT 8, 9 for our ninth graders, PSAT 10 for our 10th graders, PSAT, you know, NMSQT for our 11th graders, and SAT. It's the College Board suite. They have a different definition of college readiness, and they report out the college readiness score. It is higher. I would say significantly higher than the MAP score for college. You know, when we say like X percentage, it's a much higher percentage that are college-ready in 11th grade. And I would imagine it'll be a much higher number when we back map that to ninth grade, when the kids take it to ninth grade. But that's one of the things that creates like confusion, right? In eighth grade, you know, on the MAP, your, you know, your son or daughter gets a little, you know, "My student is college-ready in fifth grade," or "My student is not college-ready in fifth grade," and all of a sudden, in ninth grade, they are. But there, that's, that's the difference in assessments. So if we're comfortable with that, which I don't think we necessarily should be because we're calling, it's a definition of terms piece, we just have to be really careful. I mean, when I report college readiness data at our next board meeting, you know, when I report what that is, it's going to look marginally higher than what it was when the kids came in using the MAP test in eighth grade. And it, it looks different, partially because kids grow and mature, but also, it's a different measure.
So it is possible to explain the difference clearly, which you just did.
I did. But we need to agree on that difference in that it's not a reflection on District 65 or 202, and we grow, we can't claim 40% growth. I mean, we'd love to. We'd love to walk out of here and be like, "Look, we did awesome, spike the football, go home." But we know that's not realistic, nor is it accurate nor fair. So when we talk about these things, making valid inferences off of assessments, which is what we're trying to figure out right now, we just need to be really clear on what those are. I'm much more comfortable talking about proficiencies than college readiness.
What do the vast majority of school districts that are K-12 do?
Right.
It depends.
I, I, I think that many districts, elementary districts, use STAR for students in, at least in junior high, I know they use STAR. And that's helpful. So when they come to the high school with, with the information, it does help with placement, and it also helps plan instruction. So kids come in and, and, and we kind of know where they should be and what skills are lacking and how to, how to plan. So, I have firsthand experience with that.
So, I, I was just simply going to ask, is the goal still correct? I mean, is this what we should be looking at? If, if there's a challenge around the college and career readiness and us understanding that or creating a clear definition because it keeps changing or whatever, what are we really trying to achieve? And then if we can figure that out, then, you know, then we should be able to figure out and tell the story. So if the goal is complicating the story, but we're doing the work, then how do we adjust the goal so that we can not, not move away from, you know, not changing, I'm not asking to throw it away, but I'm just trying to get us beyond this conversation over the past several years and now people are expecting more than, you know, and you're not able to tell the complete story. So, I'm real basic, I'm going to the beginning, is the goal still the goal that we should have?
And I got to say, this underscores what, you know, so the NERA work, right? I mean, again, we, we are, again, looking for certain literacy outcomes that we, it's been three or four years that, I guess, this, this work has been going on, it's been agreed upon, and we can't seem to come to, to an agreement here. So, so, so again, it's, I agree. Should we revisit this as, as a joint?
I don't think there's anything wrong with the goal as it's written, and I, I feel strongly that literacy is pretty darn foundational for our students. I think the, the problem that we're really, that's coming to a head right now, as we sit here four years later, is that we didn't identify and define in a clear way what the strategy was for measuring our achievement towards that goal. I, I don't think there's anything wrong with the goal, I think there's everything wrong with how we're reporting out our progress towards the goal. And, and that's what we're all sort of going around in circles on tonight, and it's probably at this getting late hour, even though I'm in a more comfortable chair, not going to get resolved right here, right now, with all of us around the table. But it clearly needs some work in the joint committee, I would think, to figure out whether we can get on the same page about how to, how to report out our progress or lack thereof. And, you know, I, I agree with, there were three or four different people around the table from both of our boards who said, "Look, you know, we have two measurement systems, let's at least get the data reported out using the two different systems so we can see something." I mean, right now, we get these snippets, and every year, we, we got nothing last year. And then the year before that, we got a joint report, but then there's no consistency from year to year on how that data's reported out. So we're wasting, you know, valuable time here, I think, talking in circles about, you know, what we've got or what, what we don't have in terms of results. I, you know, at a minimum, I think, Joey, you had the, you know, K through 12, I mean, with a line drawn where the reporting system changes. I, I, you know, I think we can all figure that out.
So, I, I agree that literacy should be the goal, or joint literacy goal should be what we're trying to do. But if the strategies or the tactics to get the information that we're trying to achieve isn't there or they're not in alignment, or four years later, we're still asking the same information, then I would refer to the experts to say, you know, "How do we get the information? How do we achieve the goal?" You know? And so, and to put that back in your lap and hold you accountable in giving us the information that we need...
Agreed.
So we can see the story and tell the story. But it is not for us to continue to have this conversation. And we keep hearing from you that part of it is that we're, you know, we're looking at two different parts, we're breaking it down, we're looking at, so we know that. So then, how do we move forward so that we can, you know, get the story? Because literacy is a goal for just about in-school, out-of-school, it's a goal at the Y. I can tell you what assessment we use, but we're, you know, we're working together to get to the end result. So that's what I would like to see us do.
Do we need an intergovernmental agreement so you guys can share each other's data and figure it out together?
But you don't even, do you even need to share the data?
I don't really get this data sharing at all.
Can I, can I jump in for one second? Because I really feel like the more this goes into a data discussion, the less we lose sight of the 72 black male students who are freshmen, who are not proficient in reading, the 56 black female students that are not proficient, the 128 students who are not proficient in reading, that's just, that, the discussion around the data...
Yes.
We don't need a letter of agreement to get together and, and talk about reading and talk about race and equity and really make decisions that are in the best interest of our kids. I just don't want to lose sight of that as we go through this work. We'll figure out, we'll have a better report next time, we'll have some data that we can talk about, I'll show you all the college readiness stuff with the big caveat. But what I don't want to lose sight of is, we're not exactly knocking it out of the park, no matter what measure we're looking at. And we need to be really honest and, and just let those numbers sit with us for a little bit. I'm going to share some AP data in a little bit, which tells another story, but it actually kind of tells the same story. And I'm going to walk through that in a little bit. But I just really don't want us to lose sight of, the numbers really aren't where they need to be, and that's on the adults, that's on, that's on the educators, that's on folks. You know, having policies is great, but when policies go to implementation, and you know how that is, and we really need to figure and do, and double down and do a much better job. Because even though this looks like an increase, I would caution us to say, and to just, I would say, "There's a bigger conversation here than the data."
I think that's exactly right, but what's missing from that is any sense that the couple hundred kids, predominantly students of color, who are not achieving in the, in the ninth, shown as not achieving where we want them to be in the ninth grade level, we have no sense of what was happening. The majority of those kids came out of District 65. Where were they all along the way? And we don't, we have no idea based on, on what you've given us. We just don't know.
And then where do they go through 12th grade? How does the story continue on?
And then on the other side, right?
It seems to me that, from what you've shared, that it is possible that we can get this data based on proficiency but not college and career readiness.
Right.
And I think that is, that is what we need to be discussing. How many proficient readers do we have? And, and I personally would like to see that information by cohort, because we want to know how folks are progressing. So I don't want to belabor the point about data, but I would feel comfortable with talking about urgency when we have the idea of how many proficient readers we're producing and if they're making progress year to year.
Sorry. Well, I was going to say, the, the data doesn't even need to be shared between the two districts. It's just a agreement on what the slide should look like, and if District 65 can populate the K through eight slides and then the section of the slide, and then 202 takes it from there, if we're looking at it longitudinally, you wouldn't even have to share the data.
So, my apologies on that. And I think we've got, we, if, you know, I think we've heard at this point that we've got some very solid suggestions on how we can bring that forward. I think a key piece that Pete has underscored in this, too, is our data systems within our own districts are also helping us to understand and inform the work and that we have a good deal of urgency about this work. And we have a pretty good sense of where we are beginning to see the movement that we want to see and places where we know we really need to dig in and do more work. But we will certainly kind of go back, you know, again, digression into the data, and I partially own that, so I apologize for that. But the, you know, we will make sure that we come in with something that is, that tells a, is a clear story. I think for each one of us, we have a, you know, as Pete just pulled the number, a real sense of urgency around this work. And I think we carry the stories with us, but we'll make sure that we frame the story in more of a longitudinal manner next time.
Thank you. And I think, you know, just to, to wrap it up, so we can, can move on to the next discussion topic, you know, I think what I'm hearing is, I don't, none of us want data just for the sake of data. And I think, you know, Dr. Babes, you made a good point, you know, we do need to make sure we're looking at, you know, what the numbers are telling us and have some such a sense of urgency around that. I think we're asking for the data to help us understand how we are progressing towards this goal and how we are progressing to reduce the red that we're seeing on that, that bar graph. So, I think, as Monique said, let us know what you've, I think you've heard, we're looking for longitudinal data, we're looking for cohort information, we understand that the, the assessments don't align perfectly, but then tell us how we can get this information we're looking for around, essentially, how are we progressing on this goal beyond just, you know, the, looking at two things separately. So, I think with that, whenever we bring that forward, hopefully, we can have some better sense with whatever caveats need to be included of how we are progressing.
I have one.
Can you?
I have a question for you, Stacy.
Yes.
Around the third grade problem of practice that you were saying you all are investigating, I mean, there, there were some troubling data there, and so I just wanted to hear more about how you all are diving into that and if there are any guesses as to why that regression is happening.
So there are two, I think, two pieces of, there's multiple layers in that story. One, that particular cohort data, when we run it against an average as opposed to the particular cohorts, the story is not as significantly negative. It is paying attention to that, to that specific cohort, which is now in fourth grade, and really trying to make sure, one, that the curriculum needs are in place to meet the, the range of learners that are within that class right now, and two, then taking a look at the third grade implementation. So we're really trying to watch both, that, that grade level experience and that cohort experience, because, again, when we look across an eight-year average, it's flat as opposed to down, but we want to pay attention and own the data that's with that particular cohort. The professional learning there has shifted to strengthening our vocabulary and our word work while, while offering professional instructional coaching that can, allows educators to choose their area of need. They can either have coaching aligned to the new professional learning focus, which we think is really important around academic vocabulary and has pathways for differentiated grade level and differentiated support. And, or educators can opt to continue to dive in and work on reading workshop delivery or differentiated instruction, their small group work. And so by giving educators choice and also tapping into educators to help lead the PLCs that are launching on the half-days, or really helping, and allowing educators to choose the spaces that they want to identify and believe is the space for growth for them, we're looking to shore up place, that the individual areas where educators feel like they need to advance student performance the most.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to our next discussion item, our equity update.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so I'm going to transition into the, and we're going to talk a little bit about advanced placement. I have a brief slide deck, but I wanted to do just a little background knowledge. You know, the work that we do around advanced placement and pipelines and preparation is grounded in the belief that opportunity and support matter. We are focused on providing students with the best educational opportunities. And for many juniors and senior students at ETHS, the best opportunity is an advanced placement course. When we examine access and success metrics that you'll see in this report, it's important to note that the work remains focused on disparate impacts. Yes, you'll see significant growth for each subgroup, but you'll also see disparate outcomes persist that are based on race. So, let's take a look. First of all, as Dr. Figlio alluded, the advanced placement program has gained independent recognition in quite a few places. Just briefly, what is an AP score? And this is really for, for folks who don't normally get this show. AP tests are scored on a five-point basis. One is a no recommendation, two possibly qualified, three means you're qualified for college credit, four well-qualified, and five extremely well-qualified. I love that, by the way, the distinction between well-qualified and extremely well-qualified. I have no idea what that means, that's why in our presentation, we group fours and fives together. The value of a three or higher on an AP exam, advanced placement courses, you take an end-of, end-of-course exam, and if you score a three or higher, public universities and community college in Illinois are required to award college course credit. That's transcribed credit aligned to an actual college course. It doesn't say AP Calculus AB, it says whatever that calculus course, course code is at that public institution in Illinois. That's significant. That's a game changer, and that happened a couple of years ago. We have continued success as a program. In 2017, we had more scores of three or higher than we had exams in 2010. And we had 1,450 test... test scores of three or higher last year in 2017, compared to 13,84 tests administered in 2010. That is a tremendous growth. That is tremendous growth. Our access is up 120%. That's the number of, you know, AP tests, and our scores of three or higher are up 66%. Each subgroup has made gains, but access and success gaps persist. That slide might be, might look familiar. I'm test-running it, I don't know, I think it's pretty good. But I won't talk about that one. Here you'll see our growth in access over time. This is simply the number of tests that were taken over time. You'll see that in '06, '07, we had 1,059 tests, and in '16, '17, we had 2,335 tests administered. We had a 41% increase in scores of four or higher. One of the questions I always, I used to get when we started doing this work is, did the scores just increase at the three level, Pete? No, actually, the greatest growth was at the four or higher level. That's well-qualified. And extremely well-qualified. One of the things we started reporting on last year was, we took all of our 11th and 12th graders, and we divided by the total enrollment in 11th and 12th grade, and we came up with the percentage of all 11th and 12th graders who take an AP exam. We thought that was an interesting thing to look at. You will see that 64% of all students take an AP exam, 87% of all white students take an AP exam, 43% of Hispanic-Latino students, and 36% of Black-African-American students, 44% of all 11th and 12th graders. Again, the denominator here, right, is dividing by all 11th and 12th graders, not just those that took AP tests. So when you look at that, 44% of all of our 11th and 12th graders scored a three or higher. It's an interesting way to look at it. You'll see growth in all subgroups. Here are our total AP students. One of the things we started to look at was the total number of unique AP students, and unique AP students with scores of three or higher. So we always talk about how do kids do, because we think that's really important, because if you just report the number of tests, you might have a kid who takes four, you might have a kid who takes five, it might skew your data. So we decided to move toward looking at total AP students. We had 988 total AP students in '16, '17, and we had 685 students who scored a three or higher. We had 159 Black students who took an AP exam, and 65 of those students scored a three or higher. Those are high watermarks. Latino students, 119 total unique students, and 77, again, highest level. If you go back, you'll see we had, you know, the numbers have grown consistently over, since '11, '12. There was one anomaly, and I still don't know, that might be a data thing. We never figured that out. The 37, that's what the College Board gave us, we don't know if it's accurate. So, but if you look at everything else, we have our white students, going from 519 unique white students to 617, 416 scores of three or higher to 483 scores of three or higher. These are unique kids taking exams, maybe they take two, maybe they take one, but this is sort of how we've decided to look at growth. Nationally, we see, this is our national slide we often show, it's a narrowing of opportunity. You know, the substantial growth of the AP program is the result of the efforts of our teachers, board policy, and student mobilization, but it also relies on early awareness, access, and success. So when I look at these things, what I'm most concerned about, you know, when I look at those numbers, what I'm most concerned about is the experience that our students of color have throughout elementary, middle, high school, and once they land in an AP course, what's that experience like? Because we need to prioritize, it's one thing to have an effort to get kids in, it's another thing to create environments that prioritize supportive, affirming, and rigorous learning environments. And that's been a real shift, and we're in the middle of that shift. We used to say at the start of the work, that we weren't interested in AP students walking in the door, we were interested in creating AP students once they were in the door. That is a very awkward, race-neutral metaphor, which no longer holds up for me. Really, what we also need to think about along these lines is, you know, it's adaptive change. There used to be the belief that a rigorous learning environment could not be affirming of a student's identity, nor supportive of the students therein, and that's shifted over time. And let's not forget that the foreclosing of access starts early in a student's academic career. The, you know, if we look at the big picture, we need to remember that AP potential is found in all racial, gender, and economic groups, and this is from the literature, it says thus, and I never use thus, but I'll use it now because I'm quoting, thus, under-representation is indefensible. And that's the challenge here, right? It is essential that success should be perceived as the norm and not the exception in these So, long story short, if specific conversations are not had about race, racial disproportionality, bias, stereotype threat, and the racial climate within the districts and the classrooms, then the effort for representational access and success in AP courses will not be realized, because the, those spaces will not be affirming to students. And now I'm going to just click through some, just some of the supports we've offered over time, and we continue to expand. I don't, I could put my glasses back on, but this is our Team Access and Success in Advanced Placement Program. It's for students by students. It's, it runs a significant year-long calendar of supports. It includes lunch meetings, it includes an AP forum, where we work with sixth, seventh, eighth graders, as well as ninth and 10th graders, as a preview of what AP courses are, what they're about. It's an annual event, we do a spring training event, we do a whole bunch of events, and they're focused on what is AP, what are the pathways to AP, what classes should I take, what should I be thinking about, and really demystifying what AP is. We make visits, we're available, we'll come out. Here we are at Lincolnwood, we brought a group of students, Team ASAP students, to Lincolnwood Elementary, and we held the forum, and we started the forum by asking kids, who wants to be a scientist? A bunch of hands went up. Who wants to be a mathematician? A bunch of hands went up. Who wants to be a writer? A bunch of hands went up. And then we started the conversation, great Q and A with our students, with elementary school students. We've also done some work at SHU. We presented a little bit ago at a professional development event at SHU. We brought our Team ASAP kids, and one of the teachers asked the students, you know, what is, you know, what do you need more of in middle school and elementary school? What do you need more of? And the kid said, I love hands-on science. I'm in AP bio, and I just remember that we did this one thing where we went outside and we made a sundial. All right, that's awesome, right? Kid remembered. I mean, it was those kind of things, hands-on experiences, supportive environment, those were the themes that really, really rose to the occasion. We have a variety of partnerships, we've partnered with the Minority Student Achievement Network, Avid, we work with Peer Tutoring, Emerge, we have, work with our Northwestern, has a leadership program with sophomores, and they've created some opportunities, some outreach. So these are just a few of the things that we're engaged in. Stacy, turn it over to you.
You know, really, the addition is, you know, and I appreciate Pete for laying out this, this presentation, and really compliment the level of growth that has occurred in AP access and success. In District 65, you know, our work is centered on a couple really important things. As Pete mentioned, the creating of affirming environments is incredibly important, and keeping pathways and opportunities open are also critically important. And so last year, the board supported us moving to one, an Algebra I course for all students. Situations and opportunities like that are critically important. We're keeping students in the opportunity, in the game, in an opportunity to access high-level and rigorous instruction. So, you know, we're going to be reporting back on that next week as well, and so thinking about those opportunities where we make sure we are not, through our own systems and structures, creating pathways that basically take kids away from access and opportunity. And so we continue to look at our systems and structures, and think about how we're making sure that early on, when we gave second-grade math this year in the fall, what patterns do we see around student achievement, and how are we intervening early, early in our literacy work, early in our numeracy work, so that we can continue to strengthen the mindset and the commitment and the feeling of belongingness for our youngest of students all the way through the end of eighth grade. And so I see for us, the same platform that we had under the literacy work, learning work, is the same platform that has to sit underneath the AP work. It is that we need to deepen our culturally responsive pedagogy work, that students in safe and affirming environments, taking on challenging and rigorous work. It's us engaging in our equity learning, and making sure that we're constantly questioning and interrupting our own beliefs, systems, and processes, systems, and structures, and continuing to move forward, questioning about whether the way we are doing things is keeping kids in the game and aware of access and opportunity as we move forward. So my hope is that continuing to deepen the foundation of that work, we'll continue to expand opportunity, both access and opportunity, for District 65 students as they move into 202 and experience success in AP.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments. Okay, well, thank you for that. I just want to comment that I in particular appreciate the language and commitment around, you know, I think so often we hear that opening up access means a, you know, probably a dumbing down of classes, and I think that's clearly not the case. And so I appreciate the language around, we're creating rigorous classrooms that are affirming of a student's identity, and particularly a student's racial identity. So I appreciate that language, and I appreciate that, that that's the level of, I just appreciate the highlighting that, because I think that often, that sometimes gets lost in the narrative when it, the, it get, the changes get out into the community.
And if you combine that, I want to tip my hat to the high school. The teams that come over to our elementaries and our middles are just fabulous, and so the principals report back, the teachers report back on the excitement that the kids have, and you see the kids walking around with class of 26, or whatever the class is that they're going to be, so they get the T-shirts, and, but there's a really deep engagement that is, that focuses full circle back on affirming that you can access the great things at the high school, as long as you stay on track.
Well, you know, and I think what you're doing is creating a welcoming environment, because, you know, AP was not a welcoming environment for students of color, so that exposure first, asking the question, you know, who wants to be a scientist and so forth, and then exposing them to students that look like them, that's actually going this route, then they can create a vision.
Right.
Right? And then we provide the supports that are needed to get them to that point, and then they see themselves in it, and then they achieve. And I think it has to be that intentional from the very beginning, at least, you know, it was for my son that had no idea that he could wind up in an AP class. That was not his vision until he was exposed, and then he received the support. So I think the more we can do that, then, then we will break down those, you know, those stereotypes that, that our students can achieve in, or students of color can achieve in AP classes. So I appreciate that effort, and I think, you know, just doing that, because that's where it started, it's real simple, and then, and then kids want to achieve, because we expect them to, so.
Excuse me.
All right, well, thank you very much for that presentation. We will then move on to our final, the final discussion portion in our equity update, a report on Courageous Conversations Summit, which I know many of us at this table went to, and many colleagues in the district went to, so, did you want to, did you have a preference?
No. Maybe revise.
I don't know who's starting this discussion.
I don't know. I guess I can start. Yes. Yeah, so I attended my ninth Courageous Conversations Summit. This was the 10th meeting, and so I'm already having a lot of feelings about why I didn't go that first year. This was the largest group ever, so we had 1,000 people at the conference. It was, it was pretty amazing. I would like to hear from some other folks in terms of their experience. I was also at the pre-summit, and I know that I saw several people at the pre-summit. I did Beyond Diversity III at the pre-summit, so a very different and challenging experience for me. So it was, it was a pretty, as usual, it's a time when we come together, and I'm struck by the fact that this is, this keeps getting bigger, and it's, and it's getting beyond education. When, when it started, it was, it was literally K-12, and then it moved to higher ed, and now it's moving into corporate, and there's a lot of people there representing many different organizations, independent schools, different agencies, parents, so there, there are just so many folks that it's, you're quickly run out of time in terms of making connections and who to talk to. I struggled, because there were so many good, good sessions that I wanted to go to, that I didn't get a chance to go to many of those sessions. And Monique, and Pat, and I presented a session on how school boards can engage in this work, and it was, well, I'll let, I'll let them talk a little bit. I thought it was really well, well-received, lots of really good discussion, really a good session. So, good for both of you. Pat, you?
Sure. Well, I'll start there. It was a very good session. In fact, it was so good, we didn't get through all our slides.
Yes.
Because there was a lot of conversation, and I think that was, it was very helpful for us. We were lucky to have some of our great ETHS colleagues with us in the room, so they could drill down on some specific answers on the how-to and the details. So it was really very well-received, and I think showed, you know, what we have done, and I say we only, I'm newer on this continuum, but in terms of the commitment from the policymaker level down through the organization, and just how eager people in the room were to understand that, and how we did that, and how we support our own development, our sort of big-picture development of this work, and then how we, as board members, stay in our lane, but, but support the wonderful people at the school to do the work, and then what that looks like in the end. So it was, it was a very, very effective and exciting conversation. And since I'm talking, I'll just, a couple of quick things. One, Monique's going to help me with the name, because I was just looking on the app and I can't find it, but we were thrilled that in a ballroom of over 1,000 people, our colleague, Pat Savage-Williams, was presented with an award for her work in supporting equity in the community. And Monique, if you can find the name, that would be awesome.
Absolutely.
Okay. Poor Pat has to tell us the name, but it was just, I have to tell you how exciting it was to be there, and obviously, you know, we think the world of Pat, personally and professionally, and she's a great leader of our board, but she's also a great leader in schools and in our community, and so it was wonderful to hear her be acknowledged. But then she said the most amazing remarks, and just really, certainly, obviously spoke to just why she should be up there receiving the award. But for me, it was, in addition to that pride and gratefulness to her as an individual, to her as a leader of the work, and what that looks like in our community, and what it's meant to our kids, and I was just, I was overwhelmed, and I got to sit next to her husband while she got the award, so that was extra special. But really, just an outstanding honor to be there, to see someone that obviously deserves every honor, to get that recognition, so, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. She's definitely a champion. She's definitely a champion in the equity work. And I don't think there was any place that I could go throughout that hotel that people didn't recognize Pat for her work. So, so I think that's why our presentation was so good also, because she, she sort of took the helm. But also, so two things, two of my takeaways, that equity work is constant work, it's personal work and it's group work if you're a school board member or a member of this community. It can't be done in isolation and it's not passive, right? So because of that and because I'm, you know, I'm just so honored to be on, on Evanston Township High School School Board and all the work that we've been doing to advance our equity work, I was a little disappointed and I said this to Pat in the beginning, the masterclass, the first masterclass is really like just a general session, and they listed the, the school districts and, you know, that have been advancing in this equity work. And I was like, Pat, where is Evanston Township? You know, because we've been doing this work and, and then to hear them receive the feedback after our presentation in comparison to some of the other districts that had also done presentations and I participated in and listened to and so forth, you know, I, I don't know why we're not up there. And, and it's not a lack of us not doing the work, but there's something that is creating, you know, some sort of distraction of why this work is so important and why we need to continue to tell our story in a broader scope. And it's not, and I don't, and I'm not putting this on the, on the school district or whatever, but I think, you know, school board members can either make or break the equity work. So we can either be champions of it or we can be distractors. And I just fully believe that it's, it's one thing to talk about it, but it's another thing to really be actively engaged in the work of equity. So ever since I've been a board member, I've gone and every year that I've gone, I've learned more about myself as an individual and as a leader in this community. And I just, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful since we're talking about this and it was hard for us to even start this conversation, like who's going to start it? That shouldn't be what we should be engaged in. We should jump into this work because it is so critical to everything we just talked about earlier today. So, you know, I get emotional about this because we have conversations, we want to break it apart, but then we keep seeing the same data of the results of certain kids not performing, but then we question on some level why we're still in this work of equity. So it's an honor and it's a privilege to be on, on the board, to represent Evanston and then to continue to go and learn more about myself and to come back stronger than before and more committed because it needs to be done. So that's my Courageous Conversation Summit in a nutshell. And that's, and that's, you know, I don't know how we have conversations about everything we've been talking about, about students in AP and, and joint literacy goals, and we can't have a dialogue about equity work or do the personal work. So that's where I'm at. So congratulations, Pat.
Thank you. Anya?
Yeah, so I had some board comments around our District 65 equity work, which relates to the importance of National Summit and relates to the importance of our commitment to doing learning through the expertise that's provided from the Pacific Education Group. I'm just going to go ahead and, and read what I have here. In, in my tenure on the board, when we embarked as a governance body on having conversations explicitly about racism in our institution and in the lived experience of, experiences of children and families, I often mention our role as needing to set the tone for being brave and bold. I commend Max Weinberg of Lincolnwood for his brave and bold choice to explicitly name and call out the racially harmful and racist language and behaviors that were being witnessed in, in the work, in his work at Lincolnwood with children and families and him working with educators, children and families to lead conversations, to build an anti-racist dialogue, to protect Black children and families from harm. I'm grateful to our district for investing time in building capacity to have such conversations through introducing the Courageous Conversations compass and protocol and trainings to educators, board members and administrative leadership, as well as community members. That makes this brave and bold step possible. Given the historic harm that has been done by the presence of racism for generations in the form of disproportionate discipline and lack of positive representation in curriculum and low, low academic expectations in inhospitable environments for Black children and families, I'm greatly for the investment that our district has made in preparing our professionals to facilitate conversations, to expose, heal and correct. Though I would, I would contend that we need to do more. Children and families who hold and espouse racist views should not find an accommodating environment for those sentiments that create a hostile and threatening space for Black children and families. Our schools should be known as anti-racist spaces and all of our children and families, including our Black children and families, should feel emotionally and physically safe and welcome. I want to say explicitly to our children and families that all of our public schools belong to all of us and you are bright, loved and wanted. I believe in and support your greatness and expect amazing things from you. I too, I too once, upon a time was underestimated and viewed as a statistic. I've defied every, excuse me, I've defied every single one and you who feel weighed down by those same low expectations can defy them too. We Black people are descendants of greatness and untold history and cultural values that have shaped the world. Our ancestors founded the first libraries, made architectural wonders and fierce and vast civilizations. We have resisted subjugation in many forms and we can and will resist it today and tomorrow together. Shine bright, beloved. District 65 belongs to all of us and those who disagree, we will not leave you in the dark with those misguided and isolating beliefs. We will not allow you to miss out on the greatness that exists in your neighbors. We will challenge you to do better and be more inclusive. We will challenge you to leave our district with a skillset that will allow you to develop relationships and impact the world in community with people of many different backgrounds and to explore your questions about the world in a way that is informed and accountable. We will challenge you. Back in April, I made a statement and I asked that we be clear that racial slurs are words that have, were generated expressly to reinforce violent dehumanization, threats of harm and subjugation, not simple insults. The Great Migration did not occur just because Black folks were seeking employment. It was also to escape terror in the form of unchecked bombings, lynchings, beatings that were justified by dehumanizing beliefs, policies and language. The N-word used by dominant groups towards Black people carries centuries of threats of violence. As a result, our response to this, to their use as a system needs to be significant. As such, I would like to see us make time as a board to discuss how, how our schools are actively declaring themselves and their values to be anti-racist to children and families. I don't believe that we had that conversation and I was out due to childbirth and a stroke. I, I would ask that we as a board commit to having that conversation that I, that I called for in the spring. What are, what affirming and expansive racial messaging are children receiving about the extensive contributions and deep value that Black peoples have brought and continue to bring to the world, our community and our schools to counter the efforts of dehumanization? What books and facilitated conversations are being used to respond to the symptoms that are showing themselves, racism and racial resentment? What is being done to make clear to children and families the gravity of the use of racial slurs and racism and ensure it is, it is explicit that it will not be accepted in our schools? How are we doing that? And our children, if our children are using racial slurs, whether lightly or with the intent to harm deeply, if our children are playing on playground equipment where it's been caught, where racial slurs have been carved into, I believe those who were intended targets need to feel protected. They need to feel welcome and those who have witnessed the harm or feel secondary trauma as a result need to also understand the gravity of the harm. And those who have perpetuated it need to understand that this is an environment where it will not be accepted. For me, attending summit was like a breath, a breath of fresh air. Okay, thank y'all. I got some nods, I'm making sense. I would say that it felt like, it felt like fresh air because I felt like I could be in a space where I was seen and valued and understood and did not have to code-switch in order to have any of those things. And it is rare as a Black woman, especially in this country today, where that is possible. Our humanity is being terrorized and I appreciated the opportunity to sit in a space and feel able to be whole and able to engage with colleagues in a way that was open and honest and oriented towards all of our learning and development. And it was also an honor to have that opportunity to, excuse me, present with Serio. We presented on Black and Brown collaborations in policymaking and community engagement. And that was a wonderful opportunity for us to be thought partners to one another, to highlight the important work that we're doing at the board level and with our community and also to learn from others who came to the conference energized and ready to go. So summit's a, a special place and I really appreciated being there.
Thank you.
Yeah, so again, I want to echo everything that Anya said and, again, we had a really great presentation. Our other room was overflow. I think people, 55 people registered. We have to get more chairs, like about 66 folks who came out. And again, everybody, folks very excited about having that conversation, right? What does it look like for communities who've been marginalized to get together and work together collaboratively? Because, you know, again, historically there's been divisions there too and divisions that have been wedged because of systems and institutions that have created these false narratives and when in reality we share so much suffering together. So it was an incredible conversation. And so that was a really great experience. My second year going and again, every time I go, I learn, I learn something new. I meet great people and it is a place where you can feel, you don't have to code-switch, right? Which is a huge thing that we do. And, you know, we can be ourselves. I can be a Latinx man and it feels good. And I encourage my colleagues who haven't gone, you know, please go. It's an incredible experience. It's uncomfortable for everybody, including myself, even though we say, we feel comfortable, we also feel uncomfortable and the work is heavy and it's, it's something that weighs down on us. But we, you know, if you're not, you haven't been there, I encourage you because we all got to carry this, this work together and I highly, highly recommend it. It's, it's some really, really great, great experiences. You know, one of the most, two of the takeaways were, again, you know, again, a couple of takeaways, you know, again, congratulations again, Pat. You know, you were my teacher, you were my, my, my seed teacher and one of, one of three and you deserve every accolade that you got. I mean, it was an incredible experience that I went through with you and I was so happy to see you receive the much deserved award. Another thing, you know, we, they did, they had a student award that they gave to recognize a student and that was very powerful. It was a Latina, Latina and, you know, she, again, talked about her story and her struggle and how, again, she was a victim of low expectations. And these, these ideas that we have about our communities that are, that are out there that, you know, we don't care about school and that we don't want to succeed and she just smashed all of that. And, you know, she shared a quote that talked about existing loudly, right? And that's, that, that, that stuck with me. It's like you have to exist loudly and be proud. And for a long time when I, growing up, you know, I had a hard time being comfortable with who I was. And luckily I had people to support me and had family who encouraged me to look into myself and my culture and be, be proud of who I am. All, all, all this to find that once I became a teacher and I taught my community, you know, I would find the same issue that kids, you know, the kids had is that they, they weren't proud, they didn't want to talk Spanish, they didn't, they weren't proud of being Mexican. And that is very heartbreaking and it's still something that occurs today, which I, and given that history, right? Which, which now is, you know, we pulled the carpet, you know, we pulled, we've pulled the blanket away and this is what has been going on for so long. And given what has happened this past week, I urge all of us to really, really ensure that we help carry each other's water. I don't want to be the one Latino or Rebecca the only Latina that's carrying the water for Latinos. We can share our concerns, our hopes for our kids, but we want all of you to help us carry that water, right? And we want to carry the water for Black kids and then for, for white kids and for gifted and then for all, you know, we're here to, we got to help one another, you know, and Courageous Conversations provides that space to have that, that deep, deep courageous conversation, hard conversation that we need to have in order to prevent the events that happened, you know, earlier this week across the country. I mean, it is absolutely critical, you know, and I think that, that's the, you know, we have a huge disconnect in our society right now and we, I think, are hungry, hungry to have these conversations, which are very difficult, but need to happen in order for us to stop this nonsense that's going on all across the country. So I urge you again to, one, you know, I congratulate all, all for doing incredible work. We still got a long way to go and, you know, it's, it's just a really great experience and I encourage you, if you haven't been, please go. And it's just, it's just a really great experience for sure.
Thank you. So this was my first summit and I had an incredible experience and I just quickly want to thank both the superintendents for supporting this work and thank you, Paul, for attending. I hope that it was as life-changing for you and the work that you do as it was for me and the work that I do here. Congratulations, Pat, on your Community Empowerment Award. Very well deserved and we, I feel so fortunate to have you in our community and to empower this work. Monique, I am shocked that we are not on there because in every single space that I was in for the three days, people kept telling me, what is Evanston doing? There is somebody in each and every one of our sessions and the way that they talk is different than the way that everybody else is just coming into this conversation. We are on a national stage right now. The work that we are doing is being noticed by everybody and I am shocked that we're not on there and I just really feel so proud of the work that we're doing as 65 and 202. And I want to implore, you know, everybody at this table to be part of this work. It's all of our work and it's so important for everything that we do at this table, that we do in our homes, that we do in our communities, that we do for our kids. So again, it was, I'm still just kind of sifting through the experience, but just thank you for, for supporting this work and for the opportunity to go. I had an incredible experience and I have so much that I'm still thinking and feeling through.
Rebecca, I can tell you that's not going to stop. It's going to keep going. Really, I mean, I went last year for the first time and it's nearly an everyday experience to think about something or many things. And then this going a second time was even deeper and richer and having, just, it doesn't stop, so just to give you that heads up. I just want first to echo the congratulations to Pat. The award couldn't be more well-deserved for all you've done for the community and for me personally. I have learned so much from our conversations and just by your example. So I'm thrilled for you and our community. I also want to echo what Monique said, you know, I think this work is so... I also want to echo what Monique said, you know, I think this work is so personal, and it needs to be personal. I think a lot of, before we can get too far in our equity goals, we all have to examine our own biases and our own lens that we use in our interactions with the world. And so that's what Summit does for me. It helps me be more grounded in my own self-reflection and how I approach this work, and allows me to approach it with renewed vigor each year, and this is the third year that I've been. At District 65, in addition to several Board members and Dr. Goran going, we had members of Dr. Goran's cabinet, administrators, teachers. We've made a significant investment in this work, in terms of money, in terms of time. And I think, like Sergio said, the events of this last weekend and week and last several years really highlights why we need to focus on race. And when we focus on race, we're also necessarily embracing all aspects of our identities. We focus on race, but it's not exclusive to race. And so I think, you know, I'm thinking about on the compass, I am all in my feelings, I've been in my feelings since coming back from Summit, and then with everything that happened this weekend, I am grateful that we are in a community that is really embracing this work. We need to embrace this work because not all of our students or families feel welcome and safe in spaces where they deserve to feel welcome and safe. And so we need to continue on. This is not, these aren't things that just happen in other communities, they're happening in our community as well. But the difference is that I see is that our community is willing to do the work. I see it in not just the number of people who went to Summit, but I see it in the numbers of community members who are eager to sign up for the Beyond Diversity classes and seed classes that we're offering, the variety of programming that goes on in the community that people are attending. It's still uncomfortable, but people are willing to take on the difficult conversations about race, and so that's, it makes me grateful to be a part of this community and to continue on with this work. So thank you to everybody who's up here and who is committed. I appreciate all of you, so, thank you. I do want to open up, I know not everybody attended Summit, but I do want to open up for anybody else who has comments around the work, reflections to please feel comfortable sharing.
If I may, just add in and also echo to Pat, it was such a fantastic moment when you won your National Award because you had a standing ovation from both the ETHS Table of colleagues and the 65 Table of colleagues. We were rooting for you, and just what an honor to be in the room. We had over twenty people, and we had, and Joaquin Stevenson, who's our Director of Equity and Family and Community Engagement, was there, Latasha Green from our senior team, Joaquin actually taught at ours, and again, we have all the same stories. I got a particular opportunity to sit with the superintendents in affinity groups, and they break into affinity groups at the last day, and so this was a group of all of us. We broke into racial affinity groups, and then we came back as superintendents and deputy superintendents to talk about the opportunities and the challenges of being in the roles that we're in, and there were colleagues from suburban Kansas City, Ann Arbor, Duluth, suburban Minneapolis, so very, very similar school districts where we could really share the opportunities that we're engaging in as we move forward on our school systems. Again, we, our team has already come back and done an intensive debriefing, and they didn't have enough, so we're doing another debriefing soon, and actually doing action plans so that it's not just one and done, we went to the conference and now we're done. It's how do we apply this work into our schools? How do we apply this into our setting upstairs as an administration? One of our teachers has already had an early morning conversation with her colleagues at one of our schools, and we're going to continue to do this sort of work. So it was really an energizing event for all of us, including myself.
So I want just to add just one piece that I always think about, why? What is our whys? We asked the question at Summit. I think you probably, those of us who were there, know that that was a burning question, what is the why? And the why is eventually toward the action. That's really why we go to Summit, so that we can bring it back, and why we do our own personal work, so that we can change and put on a different lens, and always, not just for a few days, but always see things differently, and always ask questions, and always come back into our systems and try to figure out how we can change the system and how we can impact the system in a different way. One of the things that I was able to do when I was preparing for our presentation was look at the timeline, I actually made a timeline, I'm happy to share that slide, to look at all the work ETHS has done prior to adopting an equity statement in 2011. And that timeline started in 2007, and all the background, all the, it was like laying bricks to prepare for this different building, this new building that was going to be built. And the bricks were very carefully planned and laid, and sometimes it didn't look like it was working toward the big plan, but everything just kind of worked together. So when we got to 2011, and when we got to looking at our humanities structure and the tracking, a lot had already been done. And that really took some planning and some courage. And part of that process was starting Beyond Diversity. And in doing the Beyond Diversity, Beyond Diversity and Pacific Educational Group just gave everybody a different lens, not this is what you do, but just gave folks the ability to look at things differently, the ability to look at where the disparities are in our district and go after that. This must be where we need to work because this is where the disparities are. This is where the disparities have always been. This is the tradition, this has been in place forever, it feels like forever, but that's where we need to start, and that's where we need to dismantle. So I think we always have to think about the whys, and it's great, and I love Summit, it's in New Orleans next year, just thought I'd put that out. I think it's great, but we always have to remember that we are going so that we can change our community. That's really why we're going.
Thank you.
For me, I didn't go to Summit, and, but thinking about the why, I can still hear from Beyond Diversity, Pat, your voice, talking about why we isolate race. In the past week, there's been a number of hate crimes in the news, and I'm a white male heterosexual Jew. And the incident in Pittsburgh impacted me and my family in a unique way because of how I identify. But I couldn't stop thinking about the people whose lives were lost at the Kroger supermarket, and how the person who did that, perpetrated that, went to a Black church first and couldn't get in, but could so easily turn and go somewhere else and find people who couldn't hide. And how, by choice, I have assimilated, because I don't wear anything that obviously says I'm a Jew, but that people of color don't have that ability. And I think it just reminded me, I was telling Suniti this morning, that's all I kept thinking about as these things happen side by side, of that's why we isolate race as a topic, that's why we invest in it to have the conversations, and it's why we send people to a place like Summit to have that safe net, to work together and see the work that's going on, see that we're not alone, and then come back to the nest and build a stronger base. So, thank you all for going and for being partners.
Thank you. Well, on that note, we will continue on with the work, but for now, we will move on to action items, so if you want to go ahead and do yours.
All right, so we are at action items. So the consent agenda, so, all right, so item, our next item is the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from October 8th, 2018, closed session minutes, October 8th, 2018, regular meeting minutes, treasurer's report from August 2018, approval of bills, personnel agenda, appointments to staff, certified, support staff and coach, change in status, educational and stipends, leave of absence, there's maternity leave that's certified, resignation, certified, retirement, amended, support staff, release, which is from safety, and there's a negotiated agreement, ratification of the contract for Evanston Township High School Support Systems Association, IEA/NEA, from July, for July 1st, 2018 to July 30th, 2022. And then there's an addendum, and that includes a change in status, stipends, leave of absence, maternity, and another negotiated agreement for the engineers from July 1st, 2018 through July 30th, 2023. We have a motion for approval, please.
I'm sorry, Pat, do you need to read number five?
Did I not read number five?
I think you ended with the engineers. I just want to make sure.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, and there's another item, and it's approval of settlement agreement. Thank you. Motion?
So moved.
I have one amendment.
Yes.
I'll vote yes on the consent agenda, but can we take the forensic bill off it? I hadn't seen it. I'll vote yes on everything else, if we could just do that.
Okay.
Change.
Yes, so, so the motion, can you agree to amend the motion?
Yes.
With that amendment?
Just take the forensic bill off.
Take the forensic bill off? So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, vol. call, please.
Vol.
Yes.
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 Arson.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes, all right. And then, so now we're voting on the forensic bill, so could I get a motion to approve the forensic bill?
So moved.
Second.
Vol. call, please.
Livingston.
Abstain.
Mansell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes, all right. And that's all we have.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations as outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separation, appeal determination of the uniform grievance, September 2018 Board Meeting Minutes, April 2018 Policy Committee Minutes, destruction of the August 2016 Closed Session Minutes, Press Issue 98 and Five-Year Review Policy Amendments, and the Gift to Rice Education Center.
Second.
Cohen.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Chow.
Yes.
Tanja Booty.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Halepern.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes, so could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So we are adjourned.
And with no further business, I adjourn the Board meeting at 10:14 PM.